Okay, let's convene the two o'clock Thursday, December 1st council meeting. Carla, please call the roll.
Novick?
Here.
Fritz?
Here.
Fish?
Here.
Hales?
Saltzman?
Here. You could please read our first agenda item.
Item 1334, Accept the State of Housing in Portland 2016 Report.
Well, I will go ahead and kick things off here. Pleased to present the Second Annual State of Housing Report, put together by the Portland Housing Bureau and just released this week, and it's an effort to truly capture the state of housing affordability across our city. And today we'll have a presentation from the Housing Bureau on this report, and I will just state that the report compiles market data on neighborhoods across the city and gives us an in-depth analysis of that data in order to evaluate the progress we've made towards our shared affordable housing goals. The data within the 2016 report indicates that housing affordability in Portland in the last year has gotten worse. We know that this is an issue that disproportionately impacts low-income residents, communities of color, seniors, and individuals with disabilities. As a council, we have taken incredible steps over this past year to increase and diversify the funding sources and tools we have to build and preserve affordable housing throughout our city, and I'd just like to take a moment to revisit and highlight some, a few of those steps. As a council, we voted to increase the funds dedicated to affordable housing in our urban renewal areas from 30% to 45%. We released $62 million solicitation for affordable housing proposals, the largest ever in the city's history. We established a construction excise tax dedicated to affordable housing and dedicated revenue from the lodging taxes of short-term rentals to affordable housing development and production. We all advocated tirelessly to lift the preemption on inclusionary zoning, and we've worked hard over the past eight months gathering input and crafting an inclusionary housing program that we will have a hearing on next week. And our community has rallied around the issue of affordable housing, and together we passed a $258 million general obligation bond measure, the first bond measure in the city's history dedicated to affordable housing. We currently have almost 2,000 units, affordable housing units, in the pipeline, and by in the pipeline, I mean either being permitted or in construction, and I expect that number to increase significantly in the coming years. With all of our great work being done to address the affordable housing crisis in our city, we must not lose sight of the reason why we do this work, to see true economic diversity in all of our neighborhoods, to ensure that families can live in the same city that they work, and to make certain that longtime residents of our city that live on fixed incomes still have a safe and comfortable place to live when they retire. This is the Portland we want to see, and together this is the Portland we are working towards. I want to give a special thank you to all of the Housing Bureau staff who worked on this report. It truly is a team effort to put together such a detailed report, and I'd particularly like to recognize Matthew Schebold, who took the vision for this report to the incredibly informative document that it has become. And I'll now turn it over to Matthew Schebold and Kurt Krieger to present the highlights of the report.
Good afternoon.
Before we do that, I just wanted to mention one last thing, sort of some breaking news. I'd also like to note that yesterday, the Housing Bureau closed on the first-ever city mobile home park preservation effort. I'm pleased to let you know that the Oakleaf Mobile Home Park is now in nonprofit ownership. There are many steps to come, including upgrading the park, but this is a huge milestone, and I'd like to thank everyone at Portland Housing Bureau, especially Javier Mena, for navigating this new and unfamiliar territory while also keeping in the mind the best interests of the Oakleaf residents. So I just wanted to get that breaking news out there.
Congratulations, and thank you so much from all of us.
Thank you.
Fabulous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Saltzman, for the introduction, members of council. My name is Kurt Krieger. I'm privileged to be your housing director, and with me today is Matthew Schebold, who is both policy and equity manager for the Housing Bureau. I would like to underscore the fact that this is very much a team effort, and it consumes the work of 17 different people within the Housing Bureau. I'd like to recognize Antoinette Pietka, who is the team leader, Victoria James, the project manager, David Sheeran, and Bimal Rajbandari, who are both analysts that support both Annette and Victoria, and Martha Calhoun, our public information officer, who reads this to make sure that we don't descend into too much jargon, make sure that it still makes sense for the common person in Portland. So, would you please stand up, the team that I just recognized? So, housing for us, of course, is seven days a week, 24 hours a day, and Commissioner Saltzman has given you some highlights that are mentioned in further detail in the executive summary. The last 14 months have been momentous. For people outside of Portland, I often describe this as a housing renaissance, a housing policy renaissance, and that is, we have challenges, but we've also, as a city, responded forcefully and creatively to those challenges. And one way that I characterize this is that it was time to call the question. That is, members of council, you are used to public process, public debate, but there's a moment in time when you know enough to make a decision, and I'd like to say that in this last year, you've called the question time and time again, and collectively have mobilized new resources and provided new assets to help address the housing emergency. It is very much an opportunistic effort, and from the outside, it may look somewhat chaotic because we don't have a strategic plan and a strategic framework by which we are taking this action. Unlike some cities who have put great effort into the plan and less effort into the implementation, we've turned this around and focused on implementation first and have backfilled the strategy with policy where we need to. Seattle's Housing Affordability and Livability Agenda is a good case in point, where we have accomplished most of what Mayor Murray has set out in the Housing Affordability and Livability Agenda without proclaiming the agenda. And that's a tactical choice on our part because some of our measures required state legislative action, and we didn't want to broadcast, advertise, show our hand, if you will, where we were going, but we have, I think, accomplished a great deal. Denver, same story. They've just come forward with a new five-year plan. It required, of course, a great deal of effort on the part of the city council. There was actually a countermeasure proposed by the president of the council. It was quite fractious, but they are now moving forward with some of the things, same things that we've already done. So I want to congratulate you for acting quickly with measured and reasonable action. The actions that are mentioned, of course, the Housing and Homelessness Emergency, even places like Los Angeles, and the LA Times asked me what difference the housing emergency has made because they, of course, have declared a state of housing emergency in Los Angeles. The press can't tell what difference it has made. So I'm able to point to several actions where tangible resources have resulted from your declaration of action, including code amendments and siting standards for emergency shelters. Of course, we made available some $62 million for new housing resources in the last year. That was an unprecedented increase in available resources, and it also merged county land, county general fund resources, as well as properties of PDC and the Housing Bureau in a creative collaboration that yielded several hundred new sites. You increased tax increment financing for housing, and we'll come back later in the next two weeks with the TIF lift strategy. Working together with Multnomah County, you increased the tax abatement resources from $1 million to $3 million. You adopted the first step in additional tenant protections, which was ultimately upheld by action of the state legislature, and you've dedicated short-term rental revenues to affordable housing production and preservation. I might add that many cities are still debating whether or not to even tax short-term rentals. We're there, we've led the way, and many people look at Portland as an example. Of course, we were disciplined, focused, and successful with the state legislature by working the 32 days out of the 35-day session to get the inclusionary zoning prohibition lifted after some 17 years, and worked diligently for over six months on the intergovernmental agreement with the Chair of the Multnomah County Board of Commissioners to create the Joint Office of Homeless Services. As mentioned by Commissioner Saltzman, you enacted August 1st effectively a construction excise tax, which inures to a housing investment fund, which is tapping the hydraulics of the private market with respect to commercial, industrial, and residential development to help provide offsetting resources for people otherwise priced out of Portland. And, of course, voters were given the prospect of the largest-ever capital investment, a affordable housing bond, which was resoundingly supported, approving some $258.4 million for capital resources, which will be allocated in the next five years and spent within seven years.
Could you remind me what the total amount of the construction excise taxes was?
It's estimated to be $10 million, approximately up to 10.
Per year.
So what we did is we took the last 10 years' worth of permitting data in the categories that we had the authority to levy the tax and averaged it out, and I would offer that it also included the recessionary years, and if we had had the tax in the previous decade, it would have averaged $8 million per year.
And then lastly, as you know, having just held a study session on the matter of inclusionary housing, next Thursday you will hold a public hearing, and you'll hear hours of testimony from both opponents and proponents for whether or not inclusionary housing is a good idea. We think it's a great idea whose time is long overdue. You know, Montgomery County, Maryland enacted inclusionary housing in 1979. They have over 13,000 units of affordable housing available in suburban Bethesda, places like outside of Washington DC and Montgomery County. Fairfax, Virginia instituted it somewhat later, 26 years ago, and they have about 8,000 units of housing currently in service. So in 20 years, we should see similar numbers, but having not been able to implement this tool for the last two or three business cycles, we have a little catching up to do. So that's the good news. If you were to say the good, the bad, and the ugly, I'd like to say that all the news was good. In fact, it's not. Some of it is quite grim for the people that are struggling with housing affordability. The, in terms of production, we have increased the pipeline of affordable rental housing production by 400 units in the last year. Of those 1,900 units, we have a good distribution of units that cross the income spectrum, some 354 units under 30% of the area median, 324 between 30 and 50, 1,000 units under 60% of median income, and some 245 units up to 80%, which are provided through tax exemptions, not through direct financing. We've been able to assist some 700 existing homeowners with housing repair loans and grants, and provided short-term rental assistance to over 4,000 households, provided permanent supportive housing for some 3,900 households, assisted 1,900 households with transitional housing, and have supported 4,600 emergency shelter bids.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
One?
Yeah.
Okay. The 1,900 units in the production pipeline is an astonishing number, particularly you look at in the report about the historical production. So congratulations. And over half of them are at 60%, which I think is really noteworthy, but about, but less than five are at 30%. And the disconnect for me is that the folks we want to get from shelter to short-term housing to apartments need those 30% units. So what is your takeaway about prospects looking forward to boosting our production at 30%?
Well, and the last slide, which I was planning on going into some great detail on, but as we configured the $258.4 million general obligation bond issue, we put a special emphasis on 0% to 30% households that were not able to assist with the normal flow of funds through tax increment and other resources. And moreover, we weren't getting large units, per se, since a lot of our programs are tapped to, tap the hydraulics of the private market through things like tax exemptions, we're getting smaller units. So we're getting family-sized units in large proportion through the bond, and we're getting more 0% to 30% income units. We're able to do that because there's, of course, no debt to be paid on the properties that we acquire with bond revenues. We do plan on leveraging some additional resources from HUD through their various rehabilitation loan programs, but we don't expect those properties to have to carry a mortgage so we can help more people between 0% and 30%.
So that's a great answer, and I think what it tells the community is, you have been, you've taken the tax abatement program and really pushed it, but those don't get typically to 0% to 30%. You've taken the tax, we boosted the amount of urban renewal money, but without Section 8 vouchers and subsidies, we don't get usually to 0% to 30%. The bond gives us that opportunity, and we've got to prepare people for the fact that if we're going to provide that housing to people at 0% to 30%, which to put the human face on it, as Dan often does, full-time minimum wage workers, an older adult on SSI, formerly homeless family, they're going to be slightly more expensive because they have to come with a subsidy. But if we don't tackle that problem, then all the good work that you're doing at the bottom of this slide about getting people into shelter and into transitional housing falls short because we have a bottleneck, unless we have the units that they can move into permanently. So I appreciate that answer.
There's another thing I'd like to mention about the pipeline. We discussed one of the policy imperatives of inclusionary housing at the study session on Tuesday, and we talked about permanent affordability at 99 years. We've, of course, been through tax increment, buying affordability at 60 years. We plan on migrating all of the policies towards a permanent solution. In other words, we don't think it's fair to compel a private developer to include affordable units for 99 years and not hold our nonprofit and other for-profit partners to the same standards. So we're going to gradually go to a 99-year standard across the board. So we'll be buying longer-term affordability as well. So we do look at the overall multifamily and single-family production citywide, and in the calendar year of 2015, we saw some 4,500 units permitted and 3,700 units. And I think, and Mayor Hales, I think, would flag this if were he here, it is remarkable that most of that is happening in the central city. Portland can be very proud of its transportation policies and its land use policies yielding the effect that you all, as council members, have decided you wanted, which is to focus on location efficiency. So the market has responded. We're seeing good, solid growth in the central city, as you can see from Slide 6, which describes the physical location of these units across the city. Of course, we're tracking in real-time the 2016 pipeline, and we, as mentioned earlier at the study session, are seeing approximately 15,000 units today in the permit pipeline, which would be a tripling, if you will, of past year's practice. On the single-family side, of course, more than 60% of the city is zoned single-family, as you well know, having gone through the comprehensive plan exercise and being in the thick of the rezoning process now, some 800 units have been permitted and over 700 units produced. So even for a city that is arguably mature, we're still seeing quite a lot of single-family production. And as you can see, a lot of that is occurring in the North End neighborhoods, MLK in Alberta, significant amount in the Lentz-Foster and interstate corridors. Insofar as rental affordability, of course, we spend a lot of time working on rental affordability because those are the households that are the most vulnerable. Low-wage workers spending, on average, about 80% of their income on rent to afford a firm-market rent unit in Portland, if they can find one. So over the year, rents increased some 7% in 2015, 3% for studios, about 12.5% for one-bedrooms, nearly 20% for two-bedrooms, and 15% for three-bedrooms. That, of course, is not a sustainable trend, and it has probably contributed more to the statewide debate about rent stabilization than any other single measure. We've modeled the effect of the minimum wage increases on low-wage earners, and there is a bend of the cost curve if, and only if landlords don't take the entire wage increase in the form of higher rents, and I think that's an open policy question which we'll want to monitor in the future.
Kurt, we talk about households that are rent burdened. How do you define rent burden, and what's the current statistic that the Housing Bureau uses?
Well, rent and burden, for those of you that don't live in this world, are if a household pays more than 1/3 of their income on rent and utilities, they are deemed to be rent burdened. And we're currently, and I want to turn to Matthew because I know it's in here, I believe that we're well over 40%, but I think we're actually over 50%.
50% in terms of? Rent burden. Yeah, so about 22,000 to 23,000 households in Portland continue to pay more than 30% of their income toward housing costs, and we consider them rent burdened.
That's out of, what, 160,000 households?
Yeah, so that's specific to renter households, so around 150,000 households, yeah.
The, so it's something we continue to monitor quite closely as, obviously geographically, people are disadvantaged, often forced to travel further and further away from their work. You know, one slide that is not here, but it is on page 11, it's like, who are Portland's renters? I found this graphic to be an interesting sort of digestion of a lot of statistics, and one statistic which really caught my eye is that 15% of Portland renters get to work by car. So for all of the great transportation work that we've done, and all the equitable TOD that we've done, people's jobs are often not in close proximity to where they live. They have other reasons to need a car, i.e. their kids have to be dropped off to school or daycare on their way to work. They may even have two jobs that are in different parts of town. So rent burden is one issue, but of course, the cost of transportation is a serious matter, and we only see oil prices going up these days, not going down. So that population is going to be increasingly stressed. As they have moved to the edges of the city to qualify, they have encumbered themselves with transportation costs that are not sustainable, and I fear that we're going to see yet more stresses on those households as they are forced to double up or triple up to help maintain their quality of life. So we looked specifically at neighborhood affordability and the change of neighborhood affordability, and on Slide 10, you can see a quick extract. You know, for the median three-person low-income household earning some $39,720 per year, there were, there are two fewer neighborhoods affordable to them in 2016 than there were in 2015. And as you can see, for the three-person moderate-income households, somewhat higher, about 53,000, four neighborhoods fell out of affordability. Slide 11 talks about owner affordability, and of course, people that own homes can celebrate the increased home equity, but based on the resident satisfaction survey of the city auditor, of course, people are troubled by this because they themselves know people who are stressed having to pay increased housing prices or have household members, family members, children that cannot afford to live in the city. So median home prices increased some 44% from 2011 to 2015. It's not evenly shared across the city. The low-cost communities of Lentz and Foster saw nearly 80% increase in values, Interstate and Gateway about 62%, 59% in St. John's, and 57% in the 122nd and Division area. Now, overall, our median home price is now top $400,000 in over half the neighborhoods. So the half-a-million-dollar house is a fleeting rarity in Portland, and we look at these trends with great concern because, obviously, folks are pushed to the very edges of the city, if not out of the county and out of the state entirely, as they manage their own budgets and try to find affordable housing.
Kurt, can I ask you a question off this slide?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a sense of, sort of, in order, what are the forces, market forces, driving this? So, for example, we hear about people moving here with resources bidding up property. We hear about historically low inventory, and therefore, it's a good time to be a seller. And we know that we've been in a kind of a sweet spot with interest rates where you can leverage an awful lot of money, given the historically low interest rates, and there may be other factors. Do you have a sort of a sense of how you rank those and what are the principal drivers?
Well, it is a combination of all of the above. You know, we, the best analogy I can think of is, you know, we're the cheapest house on an expensive block. You know, we have Seattle to the north, San Francisco to the south. Businesses and residents are making location decisions based on some real black-and-white facts, so they can compare Seattle home ownership, which is significantly more costly than here. They can compare it in the Bay Area. And frankly, if they are a well-trained worker, they can work just about any place. So we are seeing in-migration of highly educated people finding work in advanced technology, advanced manufacturing, healthcare, and education. That's great news because we have a dynamic, well-educated workforce, but they're also competing with existing folks who are in less well-paid jobs for a, an inventory that is constrained, supply constrained. I don't know that, you know, I'm not a supply-side aficionado. Some people argue that if you just had more product, it would be cheaper and therefore more available, but I'm reminded that bungalows that... of the city auditor, of course, people are troubled by this because they themselves know people who are stressed having to pay increased housing prices or have household members, family members, children that cannot afford to live in the city. So median home prices increased some 44% from 2011 to 2015. It's not evenly shared across the city. The low-cost communities of Lentz and Foster saw nearly 80% increase in values. Interstate and Gateway, about 62%. 59% in St. John's, and 57% in the 122nd and Division area. Now, overall, our median home price is now top $400,000 in over half the neighborhoods. So the half-a-million-dollar house is a fleeting rarity in Portland, and we look at these trends with great concern because, obviously, folks are pushed to the very edges of the city, if not out of the county and out of the state entirely, as they manage their own budgets and try to find affordable housing.
Kurt, can I ask you a question off this slide?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a sense of, sort of, in order, what are the forces, market forces, driving this? So, for example, we hear about people moving here with resources bidding up property. We hear about historically low inventory, and therefore, it's a good time to be a seller. And we know that we've been in a kind of a sweet spot with interest rates, where you can leverage an awful lot of money, given the historically low interest rates. And there may be other factors. Do you have a sort of a sense of how you rank those, and what are the principal drivers?
Well, it is a combination of all of the above. You know, the best analogy I can think of is, you know, we're the cheapest house on an expensive block. You know, we have Seattle to the north, San Francisco to the south. Businesses and residents are making location decisions based on some real black-and-white facts, so they can compare Seattle homeownership, which is significantly more costly than here. They can compare it in the Bay Area. And frankly, if they are a well-trained worker, they can work just about any place. So we are seeing inmigration of highly educated people, finding work in advanced technology, advanced manufacturing, healthcare, and education. That's great news, because we have a dynamic, well-educated workforce. But they're also competing with existing folks who are in less well-paid jobs for a, an inventory that is constrained, supply constrained. I don't know that, you know, I'm not a supply-side aficionado. Some people argue that if you just had more product, it would be cheaper and therefore more available. But I'm reminded that bungalows that cost less than $3,000 when they were built in the early 1900s are now trading well over half a million dollars. So filtering occurs either up or down the income spectrum. Filtering means the next household that moves into that unit is either a higher-income household or a lower-income household. And if they are a higher-income household, they are filtering up, and if they're a lower-income household, they're filtering down. Of course, Detroit, parts of East St. Louis, places elsewhere in the Midwest are filtering down. We happen to be filtering up. So even the 123,000 new households that you have accommodated in the comp plan accommodates projected growth. It doesn't do anything to change that dynamic. So I think the supply is going to be a constrained supply for quite some time. I don't see that changing in the next two business cycles. There's quite a lot of literature about, you know, how much product does it take to actually reduce the price? And I can tell you that I worked in Phoenix in 2008 to 2012, and they saw a virtual market collapse. The median values dropped 65%. But there aren't enough lenders in this town, nor is there enough capital in this town to cause that kind of market collapse to occur. Nor, given our fine-grained detail of residential development, are you likely to see a developer produce that kind of product, causing the market to shift? So we're going to have continued supply problems. I think it's going to be largely in the most location-efficient areas, which is a bit of a tragedy for low-income people, because they will be forced to assume higher cost of transportation, and perhaps accept inferior schools than what they could otherwise find in Portland. Owner affordability, we do describe those neighborhoods that have fallen out of affordability. As you can see, three-person low-income households could afford more house in East Portland than they can this year. We lost two neighborhoods in the last one-year cycle, and three-person moderate-income households lost as well. We looked at renter affordability for communities of color, and this is probably the most profound and systemic trend, and that is that black households were, of course, locked out of Portland last year. This year, Latino households have lost ground and are basically on the same footing as African-American households have been. White households and Asian households are closely tracking to the median, and therefore still have some affordability available to them, but less than before. So as we grapple with what we want in the way of a socially equitable and inclusive community, we have to recognize that we're working against type, we're working against some macroeconomic trends here. And of course, we're not alone. Other metro areas have seen the suburbanization of racial minorities. Washington, D.C., most profoundly has now been, is no longer a majority-minority community, but the suburbs in and around Washington, D.C. are. And I'm afraid that that trend is continuing here as rapidly as it has been there. Ownership affordability for communities of color is similarly constrained. There's no real good news to report in that regard, I regret to say. So, as I said, the council has called the question, and you've taken some tough votes, and I thank you for your cohesion and your clear-headed vision about what needs to happen. There are several next steps that we want to highlight for you, because we don't see our work as being anywhere close to being done, even though we have more resources than ever before. The implementation of the general obligation bond and your appointment of five members to a bond oversight committee are quite important this winter. We will be bringing forward an interim credit facility that we intend to activate with the Office of Finance, so that we can begin acquiring residential real estate for the bond.
Kurt, or Dan, could you remind us, I seem to recall, under the bond, each member of council nominates or proposes someone. When is the, when do you anticipate collecting names and then bringing something to council?
Well, I was hoping to get that process underway in the next, well, this month, December, yeah.
So it's a five-member oversight committee, and the chair is appointed by the commissioner in charge of housing, and each of you has an appointee to designate. They are looking at expenditures, and I think--
Before you go on, just about the nomination process, is there any thought to waiting until the two new members of council can designate a person on that oversight committee?
Yes, there is, yes.
And following up on that point, I am a fan of providing the authority of the council to each member to nominate someone. The flaw in that process sometimes is tracking the overall composition of the committee and making sure that it's broadly representative. So you could have a situation where you have five people thinking about, you know, maybe equity or racial disparities, but then there isn't, you know, other voices. So I would welcome, at the appropriate time, a conversation about how do we filter the nominations and ultimately make sure that we have a body of five that's broadly representative? And in that spirit, one of the things we're doing in our office is composing a list of 1A, 1B, and 1C, anticipating we'll have a conversation about what does the whole look like, but have our shortlist.
Great.
Yeah, I think my, to overcome that practice, Commissioner, I think mine has been, I'm going to wait till the last, as the commissioner in charge, to see what my colleagues have, who my colleagues have nominated, and then tracking other diverse in geography, age, background, et cetera.
I would like to mention something in this regard, as it pertains to social equity and inclusion, and that is that the Welcome Home Coalition, of course, it's hundreds of people and organizations that devoted their time and talent to getting the voter-approved bond passed. Five members, of course, comes nowhere close to representing the variety of interests. So as a bureau, we need to make sure that the stakeholders are heard as we work through issues such as minority and women-owned disadvantaged small-business contracting for development, as well as for maintenance of properties that are required through this measure. So, you know, I've committed to the coalition that we will have a process that is inclusive. We think we can reach some, not just fulfill some housing goals, but also address some of our social equity goals through the implementation of the bond. As we discussed on Tuesday at the study session, the mandatory inclusionary housing is coming forward. In due time, it will be implemented. You will decide the proper calibration of offsets, and we're fully confident that you'll have the information necessary to make an informed decision. It is momentous, and while it won't apply to developments that are vested prior to the February 1 deadline, I am reminded that all the projects that are currently investing will be paying a construction excise tax if they pull their permits and when they pull their permits. So those funds will enter to the Housing Investment Fund, they will be used for offsets, and the program will be, then, I think, self-sustaining over a long period of time. I can't wait for the hearing. You know, I think 2:00 p.m. on Thursday, for those people that are watching this at home, I think it'll be a good example of the plethora of interests here in the city of Portland, both advocates and for-profit developers, all of whom are instrumental in creating a community that we care about.
Kurt, can I ask you, or the commissioner in charge, just to remind us, does the, for those people that are trying to beat the deadline and get under the gun, do they have to, do they satisfy that requirement by simply filing for a permit, or does a permit have to issue?
They can file the complete design review application. So it has to be a state of completion for them to--
That gets them vested.
They're vested upon filing if it's complete? Okay, so--
Good news for the architects and engineers of Portland, since they're all working overtime to help satisfy that demand. And I am comforted--
At this rate, there may not be any land to develop. I mean, we have to--
I am comforted that the aggressive goals that you have in the comprehensive plan will not at all be stifled by inclusionary zoning, and if anything, we've actually accelerated the throughput of the permits to meet the goals that you've established.
Well, and my understanding, Dan, is that we're also trying to structure this inclusionary housing proposal so that it's attractive enough for people to voluntarily participate?
Yes.
So the folks that are sort of getting ahead of the implementation date still might look at this as having enough value that they voluntarily participate.
We believe many will, that once, higher interest rates are taken into consideration, that some of the developers that are vested under the old rules will look at the voluntary program. We will make available the 10% to 60% option to them, and discuss with them the property tax abatement as an offset. If they're in North Portland, we'll also be discussing how the preference policy will apply to the property going forward. So, you know, I think we'll have time to do that. And we are recognizing that any system requires a bit of an adjustment. We've been very transparent and open about the changes, and people are hedging their bets by investing their resources now to get their projects permitted, but they may well choose to include affordable housing. And we'll be ready for them when they're, when they want to negotiate a particular voluntary program. Process improvements are quite important, and I don't want to underestimate the value of the governmental accountability and transparency review that Mayor Hales and Commissioner Salzman have initiated. Our goal was to reduce the throughput time, so that as we increase funding for affordable housing, that we also shorten the review time. And we are seeing tangible results in that regard. That is an ongoing evolutionary process that really never should stop. It should always be constantly challenging the directors, in this case, Bureau of Development Services, PBOT, Transportation, myself, and others, including our utilities, PPNL and PGE, to ensure that projects are actually processed and approved in a timely manner. In the upcoming budget process, we will have a robust conversation about what ought to be included in a robust landlord-tenant services office, and we will come forward with a budget request that will be fee-supported, not general fund-supported, for rental registration and inspections. We fully expect additional tenant protections to be a lively debate, and we have a state-recommended standards that you will take up as a full council, when Martha Pellegrino in the Office of Governmental Relations comes to brief you on that in the next week. As mentioned earlier, we have engaged in the community, North-North East Portland, the Interstate, URA, Gateway, Lentz, and have, and are coming back to you with some policy guidance, which conforms to a budget note that you enacted on the increase of TIF. We call it the TIF-LIFT, and that is the marginal increase of tax increment financing in those open urban renewal areas. So you'll have a chance to see that and discuss it at length with staff. And we do look forward to working with governmental relations on a robust state, as well as federal legislative agenda. We know our work is cut out for us in that regard. We have new legislators, both at the state and at the federal level, and obviously, we have some, a new administration to work with at the federal level. And then last, and certainly not least, the building on the current partnership with Multnomah County for the successful implementation of the Joint Office of Homeless Services is quite profound, and it should take, and will take, a significant amount of time in the upcoming year. So that's a preview of what we think are the next steps to respond to this continuing housing emergency.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, great report. Did you have anything you wanted to add, Matthew? Okay.
Matthew's worn out.
Yeah, I'm sure he is worn out. Well, thanks again to the Housing Bureau and all the staff for doing a great job on this report. Do we have people signed up to testify?
Yes, we have two people, Lightning Watchdog PDX and Ruth Adkins.
Okay, well, come on up. Just a second here. Welcome. If you just give us your name, and you each have three minutes, we'll start with you, Mr. Lightning.
Okay. Yes, my name is Lightning, and I represent Lightning Watchdog PDX. I thought the report was very detailed. I thought it was a very good report. I'll just add a few things of my own to the report. Again, my major concern, again, is focusing on the 30% and below median income. I think we're beginning to really do that with the bond implementation that was approved, and to really begin to focus on that area. Again, I'm looking at the chronic homeless, I'm looking at people who have serious drug addictions, that to me, they should be at the top of the list on getting into housing to not only provide a more safe place to live, but also to work and enable them, on their addictions, to live a safer, more prosperous, better, healthier life, and understand the effects that their addictions do have on them, the neighborhoods, the people around them, and begin to understand that the people in the community are looking out for them and want to make them more healthier and feel safer where they live. Again, I want to commend you, Commissioner Salzman, on your bond. That's a historic victory. I want to say another thing on the bond. I want, again, focus on when you buy seasoned apartment units, say you were planning on buying, say, 350 units. Again, I want the property taxes on the seasoned units to continue to be paid. I think we'll have plenty of operating income. I want the property tax revenue to go back into the general fund and be dispersed among the bureaus. There's no reason to have that much operating revenue in those type of properties when they're debt-free. And again, those are on the seasoned properties, purchased in relatively good condition. Again, I would like you to have a discussion with President-elect Trump, and word I would like you to discuss is that every city that does get an affordable housing bond, I would like him to match dollar-for-dollar on that housing bond. I'd like him to look at that very close. There's nobody that's been elected as a president who knows more about housing, building housing, development, financing, than President-elect Trump. We need to get in there first, get in the discussions first, show respect, and put it together like you did the bond, which is historic. Now, deal with President-elect Trump and put that together, a dollar-for-dollar match on any city that can get these type of bonds in place. And again, that's a historic thing you've done, and I commend you on your efforts, and people will see the results in the next few years. It will be game-changing in this city. So thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Ruth?
Thanks so much. Good afternoon. For the record, my name is Ruth Adkins. I'm with Oregon Opportunity Network. We're a statewide association of affordable housing and community development nonprofits. I just wanted to come and thank you for this really important report, and for shining the light on the affordability crisis and the stark racial disparities, the ones that are unacceptable and worsening in our city, both for rental housing and also for homeownership opportunity. I really want to thank the Housing Bureau's staff, and Commissioner Salzman and his staff for their outstanding work on this report, as well as for, of course, all the initiatives that have been coming and are continuing to move through this council. Do want to take a quick opportunity to plug not only, ask you to adopt not only the mandatory inclusionary housing proposal that's coming to you next week, but also that ask you to affirm and move forward with the residential infill project, which will add additional important new tools to our response to the housing emergency across the spectrum. So again, this report paints a dismal picture for housing opportunity in Portland, but I thank you for shining the spotlight and keeping up the pressure to move forward boldly on multiple fronts, to ensure that all Portlanders have a safe, decent, and affordable place to call home. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moved and seconded to accept the report. Please call the roll.
Novak?
Thank you very much for the encouraging and frightening report you have delivered, and for your explanation. Thank you. Yeah, aye.
Great. Once again, this is very important information. If we don't know the numbers, then we can't be continuing to work on changing them. So thank you for your work. Thank you, Commissioner Salzman. I was, like you, particularly struck that 59% of renters drive their car to work. And so I think that's something that we're going to have to remember, that that means that only 39% of renters actually are able to use transit or walk or bicycle. And we've got to plan for that at the same time as looking at housing units being big enough for families, recognizing that some of the numbers are hidden in here, because there's some cultures where there's-- there's some cultures where there's a lot of people living in a single unit who actually are, would otherwise be homeless or in a shelter. So it's helpful to know the numbers, to see how, what progress we've made, and to give us even more intent to continue working until we get this. I was very interested also in your discussion of supply and demand and that actually, it was good, we'd have to have a lot more units before that would hold true. So we need to look, we need to carefully tailor it so that we encourage maybe not a lot of new housing, but rather retention of existing housing, which both for sustainability and for cost tends to be the most effective way of saving the planet and housing people. So that's something that I'll be looking for in the infill discussion we'll have next week. Thank you very much. Aye.
First of all, I just want to say that my wife and I rent. We walk to work, and our average commute's about 10 minutes. So, and we're very grateful for that, to be honest. We probably used to spend 26 and a half minutes in a car, and it is a pleasure now to walk and come to work without all that stress. Kurt and Matthew and the team, congratulations. I thought last year's report was terrific. This one's even stronger. And I appreciate also the way you're incorporating graphics and other tools just to lead someone through it. Dan, your cover note, rather modestly, highlights all the accomplishments of the past year, and they are really remarkable collectively. Congratulations to your leadership. And yesterday, the auditor released the community survey, and that document and this document tells a sobering picture about a city that is increasingly unaffordable to people. And I think we just need to, we need to be clear that even with the historic efforts we're making, we are not going to overcome market forces that are swamping our city. So we're making progress. We are, we are making investments for the long term, which will mean an inventory of housing that's affordable. But a tsunami is swamping us, and we're not, we do not have the capacity to change market dynamics. What we can do is mitigate those dynamics. And I think within the tools that we have, this council has made some significant progress. And thank you for your leadership, Dan. Aye.
Salzman?
Well, I wish this report contained better news for residents of our city, and unfortunately it doesn't, as it shows rents are continuing to escalate, homeowners, home prices are going up. But I think it does show, what is important is to be honest about how we're doing, and I think this does give us a very honest appraisal. And there are many things that we're doing that are going to, are very encouraging for the future. And I, and I think it's just important that we, as a city, be true to what's going on out there. And this report is very fact-filled, so I want to thank, once again, Housing Bureau staff. I want to thank my colleagues up here and Mayor Hales. All of us worked hard to get this, this general obligation bond measure passed. So it's, and many people out in the community also worked very hard to get this passed. So we will make sure that those proceeds, with your help of appointing a good oversight committee, those proceeds are invested wisely and effectively. So thank you again. Aye. The report is adopted.
Excuse me, just before we close the testimony, I'm embarrassed that my math was incorrect. It's actually 41%.
I caught that.
Good, good, yes. I, arithmetic was never my strong point. I was very good at calculus.
Yeah, no, we have a, we have a time certain at 3 o'clock, so we'll take, it looks like a five or 10 minute break.
I'm embarrassed. No, I feel comfortable.
on recreational marijuana sales, estimated to provide three million dollars per year. Commissioner Fritz assures me that it's going to be more than that. And one of the designated uses of revenue for this tax is public safety improvements to reduce impacts of drug and alcohol abuse, such as police DUII training and enforcement, support for firefighter paramedics, street projects that improve safety, and other initiatives to reduce the impact of drug and alcohol abuse. Amendment two is a direction to PBOAT, amending an existing direction. The existing direction says the Bureau of Transportation should report back on safety performance as requested by council. This amendment would change that to annually and as requested by council. To elaborate, to grade on the reasoning behind these amendments, when voters approved the marijuana tax in November twenty sixteen, they approved using that revenue in part on, quote, "street projects that improve safety." The goal of the first amendment is to clarify that revenue for the marijuana tax can be used for street improvement projects related to Vision Zero. For the second amendment, PBOAT initially suggested a report back to council on an as-requested basis. Mr. Fritz said that Vision Zero is important enough to warrant an annual report to council, whether council spontaneously requested or not, and we agreed that was a very good idea. I want to thank Commissioner Fritz for suggesting both of these amendments.
And I second them.
Yes, thank you for seconding them. This is the type of feedback that will make our city's commitment to Vision Zero even stronger. I'm very glad the new marijuana tax revenue could be a potential funding source for these priorities. I want to thank all of the people who participated in this plan, including Clay Veka, Dana Dickman, Margie Bradway, Leah Treat, Tamore Ender, the task force members, members of the public providing input, the city bureaus who engaged with PBOAT to develop this plan, and members of other council members, the mayor's staff. Now, I'd like to turn it over to Director Treat, Margie Bradway, and Clay Veka for the presentation.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today, although this is a pretty heavy subject, I think, for all of us. It's very important, and I'm very happy that we're here to talk about an action plan and not just current circumstances. So, the completion of this plan, it does represent a pretty significant milestone for us in our efforts to eliminate fatalities and serious injuries and crashes on our streets. We spent the better part of a year engaging in a very unprecedented level of collaboration with sister agencies in the city, and also throughout the region, and with community stakeholders. We had a very diverse range of professional and personal experience in the twenty-six-member task force that brought to the table over the course of a year. We in particular are very appreciative of the partnership that we have with the Portland Police Bureau and the Fire Bureau in our planning and implementation. The most important word in this report that you have before you today for us is "action." It's not a plan that we're going to put on the shelf. This is a plan that we are going to be using, and this plan is already guiding steps that we're taking to make Portland's streets safer for everyone. Each year, more than thirty thousand people, that's the population of a small city, are needlessly killed on our streets, and thousands and thousands more are injured. Last year, thirty-seven people died on Portland's streets. Unfortunately, as of yesterday morning, we've already exceeded that number, and we're at thirty-eight, and we still have a month to go in the year. So what you have before you is a roadmap for a much safer future. It details the specific steps we need to take to get to zero, and it presents clear performance measures so that we can all hold ourselves accountable. When this city council passed our Vision Zero ordinance last June, Portland was, with San Francisco and New York, only one of three Vision Zero cities in the country. In the past year, the momentum behind Vision Zero has grown, and Portland is now part of a national network of twenty cities that have embraced the Vision Zero goal. In fact, Portland was also selected last January to be part of a select group of ten cities called the Vision Zero Focus Cities, and we're informing the national conversation on safety, and we're learning from each other. As part of the Focus Cities, we're learning from our peers, and we are sharing best practices. One area where Portland is leading is in equity, and that's definitely in thanks to the part of the leadership of our task force. Equity is our guiding principle. In our Vision Zero Action Plan, we specifically state we are committed to not causing racial profiling as part of our plan. Other cities like San Francisco are now looking to us for guidance on how to incorporate equity into their Vision Zero programs. Portland has set the national bar for equity with our action plan. The task force has identified actions that are going to prioritize investments in traditionally under-invested areas and has committed to actions that are not going to lead to racial profiling. And as I mentioned, we're committed to taking action to make our streets safer. I'm so grateful that you all have already made decisions to invest in the safety of Portlanders traveling on our streets, helping jumpstart our efforts to move on the thirty-two actions identified in the plan. In October, thank you, you allocated funding for critical safety improvements on one of Portland's most dangerous streets, northeast Halsey from one hundred and fourteenth to one hundred and sixty-second. Your investment is going to build sidewalks, protected bike lanes, install rapid-flashing beacons, and upgrade pedestrian crossings. This is a project that the community prioritized in the East Portland in Motion and the East Portland Action Plan, and is one that rises to the very top of our Vision Zero data analysis. In addition, we have begun rolling out Oregon's first-ever speed-safety camera program. The first cameras were installed on southwest Beaverton-Hillsdale Highway in September, and additional cameras are going to be installed on three other streets in the high-crash network in two thousand and seventeen. The Beaverton-Hillsdale Highway camera has already seen a stunning success and has helped reduce speeding on this thoroughfare by ninety-five percent. We will be working with our partners, the Police Bureau and the Multnomah Circuit Courts, to expand Portland's effective red-light camera program. There are several bills that the state legislature will consider this session that we believe are critical to Vision Zero's success: gaining local authority to set speeds on our streets, strengthening Oregon's distracted-driving laws, and securing state-level transportation funding that has a strong safety focus. We do have a lot of work ahead of us, but thanks to your leadership and to the commitment of our stakeholders and other Portlanders, I am confident that we're going to make the vision of zero deaths and serious injuries on our streets a reality. Next, I'm going to turn it over to Margie Bradway to walk you through the process, and Clay Veka, the project manager for the Vision Zero Action Plan, to hit on the highlights in the plan. And lastly, but most importantly, we are going to hear testimony from some of our task force members. All right, Margie.
Hi, I'm Margie Bradway. I'm the Active Transportation Safety Division Manager. Thank you, Leah. I'm just going to walk through the process and remind you where we've been on Vision Zero. So on June seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen, over a year ago, this council adopted a resolution that announced that we, as a citywide effort, adopt the goal of Vision Zero, that no loss of life is acceptable on our city's streets. At the same time, when that resolution was passed, we were also directed to form a task force. Around that same time, unfortunately, Mayor Hales is not here, but I wanted to thank him for his effort. He led the U.S. Mayors of Council to adopt a Vision Zero policy that he worked with on San Francisco's mayor. The task force has met six times. There was a larger task force that was also formed by a technical advisory committee that had representatives, as Leah and Commissioner have noted, members of the community, as well as technical experts from police, fire, health department, metro, TriMet, many experts in this area. During those meetings, we looked at all the data. We looked at several data sets, ten years of data. We researched best practices, and then with the committee, and this is a highly dedicated, highly engaged committee, we prioritized the actions that you see in the plan. So before you today, to clarify what we are asking you to do, in addition to the amendments that Commissioner Novak walked through, we're asking you to adopt by ordinance the Vision Zero Plan. We are directing PBOAT to make sure that plan is consistent with the transportation system plan, and I want to note that we have adopted already in June a Vision Zero goal in the comprehensive plan, so that's consistent with the Vision Zero goal. Also asking us to direct the Vision Zero Task Force, continue those meetings, although we recommend we go to quarterly meetings rather than monthly. And then at last, we welcome Commissioner Fritz's amendment to report back on safety performance on an annual basis. So with that, I think I'll just hit on a few slides. Or did I jump? Are we good?
I flipped through.
Okay, good, good, okay. I think we're there, and I think last but not least, could not have asked for a better project manager on this plan. I'm getting all choked up. Clay Veka did such a wonderful job, and just put your hands up if you're part of the project team. We had a great consultant team. Thanks, thank you, consultant team. And then members of the task force, can you put your hands up? Thank you so much. So we just had this great project team. Thank you to CH Two-Mill. Thank you to DKS. Thank you to all of our technical experts, and thank you so much for this task force. I have been working in government a long time, and I'll say this is one of the best committees I've ever worked with and one of the best project teams I've ever worked with. So with that, thank you, and handing it off to Clay.
Thanks, Margie. Let's see here, are we gonna? Yeah, there we go. The Vision Zero Task Force spent some very thoughtful time developing this vision statement, and every word in it is intentional. Working together, we will take equitable and data-driven actions that will eliminate deaths and serious injuries for all who share Portland's streets by two thousand and twenty-five. I'm going to pull out just a couple of components of this statement that were meaningful in particular. The first word's "working together." It states that it takes all of us, and this is important with Vision Zero as such a bold goal. It's not just people who drive, it's not just transportation experts or advocates, it's all of us Portlanders working together. The "data-driven" and "equitable" are key components to the statement, and they really guided the work every step of the way, and I'm going to hit on that in just a moment. And then by two thousand and twenty-five, the task force chose to set an aggressive timeline in order to underscore the urgency and immediacy of the work that's needed in order to get to the goal. Looking at crash trends in Portland over time, we recognize that people moving about by all modes are impacted by these serious crashes, and particularly pedestrians. The project team analyzed ten years of traffic crash data to understand the where and the what of these crashes, where the traffic deaths and serious injuries taking place on Portland's transportation network, and what is causing these serious crashes. Let's start with the where. Looking at the recent crash data, the project team identified the streets and intersections with the highest number of fatal and serious injury crashes. The task force, as well as the Vision Zero Technical Advisory Committee, reviewed the data and helped develop the methodology. We broke traffic crash data down by mode, identifying the twenty highest-crash streets for people driving, the twenty highest-crash streets for people walking, and those for people bicycling. Then we layered those streets on top of each other, and the result was a total of thirty streets that make up the Portland's high-crash network. So, defying math logic, twenty plus twenty plus twenty equals thirty, and that's due to the significant overlap of streets on each of the lists. For instance, streets like Division, Gleason, and many others showed up on the high-crash map for people walking, biking, and driving. Additionally, the team identified the thirty highest-crash intersections. Together, the thirty streets and thirty intersections make up Portland's high-crash network. In addition to using crash data to identify dangerous streets, the task force set clear direction, as you saw in the vision statement, to rely on equity data. Equity data has zeroed in on areas of Portland with higher concentrations of more vulnerable communities. This equity data, titled Communities of Concern, is borrowed from TriMet. It is a composite index made up of ten equity indicators, such as low-income households, people of color, people with disabilities, youth, older adults, among others. People living in these communities may have fewer choices about how, when, and where they travel, putting them at a higher risk as they move around Portland. And this is what it looks like when the high-crash network and communities of concern are overlapped. The task force was clear about prioritizing Vision Zero investments where this overlap Using traffic crash data, the project team dug deeper into understanding the causes of the really serious crashes on Portland's streets. As highlighted by the high-crash network, we know that street design, particularly multilane, higher-speed streets, contribute to serious crashes, with fifty-seven percent of fatal crashes taking place on our high-crash network that you saw in the previous slide. Impairment contributes to fifty-six percent of fatalities on Portland's streets, speed contributes to forty-seven percent, and other dangerous behaviors, like aggressive and reckless driving, contribute to fifty-one percent of fatalities on Portland's streets. The data was really helpful in focusing where we need to invest our resources. So let's talk a little bit more about street design. Wide, multilane streets with longer signal spacing, faster speeds, have more serious crashes. Portland's high-crash network, so these thirty streets that we've seen, they make up only eight percent of our street network here in the city, and yet they account for fifty-seven percent of the deaths. So that gives us, you know, a pretty good geographic focus with the work ahead of us. Of course, there's an interplay between characteristics of street and behaviors on those streets. On these arterials, it's easy to drive too fast and engage in other dangerous behaviors, and people walking and biking are put at a greater risk. So, street design, it can exacerbate driver mistakes, and it can encourage safe behavior. Once we had a grasp on where the serious crashes were happening and the factors contributing to them, the project team and the task force members took Vision Zero to the streets, engaging Portlanders. Through nearly twenty outreach events, monthly email newsletters, and a survey offered in four languages, we consistently heard from Portlanders, a strong desire for infrastructure to improve safety and accessibility, a call for more education about safe driving, and a sense of urgency for leaders and the agencies that support them to work together to aggressively pursue this goal. Some colleagues and I, we spent a morning, during the morning commute out at Eighty-Second and Division, just talking to people who are walking to the bus stop, walking to PCC, riding their bikes if they're stopped at a traffic signal, and we heard a consistent, repeated desire for streets that support safe crossings and access to transit. We've talked about where deadly crashes are happening and what's contributing to them: street design, impairment, speed, and dangerous behaviors. The task force and the Technical Advisory Committee spent a year working through the identified best practices to address these causes. We started with a very extensive list. The task force, we had great conversations, a lot of collaboration, to develop the refined list of thirty-two actions that's put forward in the plan that's in front of you. And we spent each of our six meetings prioritizing, refining, reworking actions until we got to the thirty-two that were unanimously agreed upon by the task force. As a data-driven plan, most of the actions target one of the four causes of deadly and serious injury crashes that we reviewed. The task force added a fifth category that you'll see at the bottom of this list, engagement and accountability, in order to capture some of the important education and data collection actions that aren't tied to just one cause. And so therefore was born the five categories from which the actions flow. We won't go through each of the thirty-two actions, you'll be glad to hear that. You have the plan in front of you, and you can reference them there. I do want to reinforce that some actions are underway or coming soon, as Director Treat has highlighted, and others will require additional resources in order to implement. Thanks to the funding dedicated by city council, by Portland voters with the gas tax, and other funding sources, the city is building out capital safety improvements on the high-crash network. One hundred and twenty-second and East Burnside are under construction as we speak. Pedestrian safety is being scoped on MLK. Foster Road and West Burnside are moving toward construction, and we're developing a safety design for outer Halsey. Last year, the state legislature granted Portland authority to roll out speed cameras, and as Director Treat mentioned, they've been very effective on BH Highway so far. We've also worked with the Oregon Speed Zone Control Board to gain approval to use safety metrics in an expedited process when we apply for reduced speed on Portland's streets. That was a big win, really getting away from looking at kind of vehicle metrics to looking at safety metrics for setting those speeds. In addition, we've worked closely with other city bureaus on a number of actions to date, and I want to highlight just a few examples. We've really been impressed by city bureau staff coming to our team saying, "We want to be a part of Vision Zero, and we think this is how we can do it." BES has created a driver safety program, integrating Vision Zero messaging, and is traveling through the Portland metro region to present it to their one hundred and twenty contractors, subcontractors, and suppliers, and they're distributing Vision Zero materials with that. Bureau of Planning and Sustainability has collaborated in developing one of the actions in the Dangerous Behaviors section, Action D seven, to improve the safety of heavy trucks, and they'll be a key partner in implementation of that. Fire, under the leadership of Chief Myers, has been an active participant on the task force, participated in the World Day of Remembrance of Traffic Victims ten days ago, and is collaborating on focused education campaigns. Police has played a significant role with active participation on the task force and on our Technical Advisory Committee in partnering on implementation of several actions. Fleet is working with us to place Vision Zero safety bumper stickers on city cars and trucks. Government Relations, of course, is playing a key role in legislative priorities, and there are others we could mention as well, and so it's really becoming a true city collaborative effort. So there's a lot underway already, and we have a lot of work ahead of us. The next three slides highlight actions that we'll be seeking additional resources to In addition to building capital safety improvements on two streets and five intersections each year, the action plan also calls for improving street design to support safe speeds in conjunction with lowering posted speeds on streets. We know that street design is going to play an important role to bring those speeds down, and we can't just repost the speed and expect to achieve compliance. As you can see, we've had a lot of success in reducing both crashes and top-end speeding with road reorganizations throughout Portland. These are three examples. So we know that street design can do a lot to encourage the safe behaviors that we need on our roadways. Portland has an impressive Safe Routes to School program in our K-eight schools, but it's not yet in the high schools. Pairing Safe Routes to School with Vision Zero to work with high school students is a perfect opportunity to connect with emerging drivers and students with increased independence as they're getting around. Leveraging our successful Safe Routes program to engage with and empower youth leadership in traffic safety is a high priority. Finally, the task force is eager to pursue an education action tied to impairment that aims to prevent impaired That was a big win, really getting away from looking at, kind of, vehicle metrics to looking at safety metrics for setting those speeds. In addition, we've worked closely with other city bureaus on a number of actions to date, and I want to highlight just a few examples. We've really been impressed by city bureau staff coming to our team, saying, "We want to be a part of Vision Zero, and we think this is how we can do it." BES has created a driver safety program, integrating Vision Zero messaging, and is traveling through the Portland metro region to present it to their 120 contractors, subcontractors, and suppliers, and they're distributing Vision Zero materials with that. Bureau of Planning and Sustainability has collaborated in developing one of the actions in the Dangerous Behaviors section, Action D7, to improve the safety of heavy trucks, and they'll be a key partner in implementation of that. FIRE, under the leadership of Chief Myers, has been an active participant on the task force, participated in the World Day of Remembrance of Traffic Victims 10 days ago, and is collaborating on focused education campaigns. Police has played a significant role with active participation on the task force and on our technical advisory committee, and partnering on implementation of several actions. Fleet is working with us to place Vision Zero safety bumper stickers on city cars and trucks. Government Relations, of course, is playing a key role in legislative priorities. And there are others we could mention as well, and so it's really becoming a true city collaborative effort. So there's a lot underway already, and we have a lot of work ahead of us. The next three slides highlight actions that we'll be seeking additional resources to In addition to building capital safety improvements on two streets and five intersections each year, the action plan also calls for improving street design to support safe speeds in conjunction with lowering posted speeds on streets. We know that street design is going to play an important role to bring those speeds down, and we can't just repost the speed and expect to achieve compliance. As you can see, we've had a lot of success in reducing both crashes and top-end speeding with road reorganizations throughout Portland. These are three examples. So we know that street design can do a lot to encourage the safe behaviors that we need on our roadways. Portland has an impressive Safe Routes to School program in our K-8 schools, but it's not yet in the high schools. Pairing Safe Routes to School with Vision Zero to work with high school students is a perfect opportunity to connect with emerging drivers and students with increased independence as they're getting around. Leveraging our successful Safe Routes program to engage with and empower youth leadership in traffic safety is a high priority. Finally, the task force is eager to pursue an education action tied to impairment that aims to prevent impaired drivers from getting behind the wheel. So, one thing that we learned through this process is that when drivers are cited for DUI, they're asked where the last place was that they were drinking, and the heat map shown on this slide is from those responses, and it's showing that concentrated areas of establishments are tied to over-serving alcohol. So, this action gives us a way to work with targeted areas to prevent impaired drivers from getting behind the wheel. Given that 56% of traffic fatalities involve impairment, we're eager to get started. And then I just, I want to wrap up with a final slide. Through all of the data analysis, statistics, and actions refinement, we've continually come back to the heart of Vision Zero, the people whose lives have been extinguished too young. Dustin's story is representative of so many of the other Portland tragedies. Dustin, a vulnerable road user who was riding his bike, was killed on Southeast Division, a street that's part of Portland's high-crash network, by a drunk driver, one of the top risky behaviors. So far this year, I'll reiterate what you've already heard, 38 community members, friends, family members, have been lost to traffic violence on Portland's streets. 38 too many, and a daily reminder of how urgent the work is with Vision Zero. We deeply appreciate the leadership that Council has provided in advancing Vision Zero, and we look forward to your continued support as we move into implementation. Thanks.
A couple of questions. Thank you for an excellent report, and Lee, I have two questions for you. First, one of the things I like about the Vision Zero plan you're coming to us with today is it's holistic, and it's fully integrated, and it's got all these different components. But, as you have learned during your time here, at budget time, we're not always able to fund everything the way you would like, and therefore, sometimes we have to make I want to just see if we can do a forced ranking, just so I have a sense of what you think, if, so that I have a sense of what you think is, of all the tools in the kit, the ones that are the most effective at getting at some of the problems. So, you've identified in the presentation potentially reducing speeds, beefing up and targeting enforcement, beefing up and expanding education outreach, and then capital improvements to make roads safer for all users. Again, at budget time, we don't, when you come in, we don't say, "Okay, we'll give you two bucks, two bucks, three, four, five, and then you get the whole package." We look for grant money, our money, federal money, whatever. But of those four approaches, if you had a, if you only had a dollar to spend...
I can do this.
Yeah, I figured you could. Just so we have a sense of, in relative terms, what gives us the biggest return. Obviously, I like the holistic approach, but since we're going to have to make choices in the short term, where do you put that first dollar?
Again, I, all of the approaches are necessary, and I love all of my children equally. So, I would ask or recommend to City Council that our investments focus on road diets and reengineering the roadways. I think that's going to have the most impact on slowing people down and preventing injuries and fatalities. But I recommend it for a second reason. When we go in and do roadway reorganizations, we are actually improving the livelihood of communities. We are supporting businesses, and we're making Portland more livable by giving people places to walk, places to bike, people to get to transit, and it's really supporting livability in our community.
That's a great answer, thank you. Second question I want to ask you is, for anyone watching or listening to this hearing, I think there's a couple statistics that really jump out at you. One for me is the 91% of deadly crashes traced back to speed impairment or other dangerous behaviors. Now, the, all of those are preventable. All of those involve conscious behavior, or even when you're impaired, you're making, there is a level of conscious behavior. And then, when you break it down, 56% drug and alcohol-related. I mean, that's just staggering, I think. And so, I keep, I keep reading the stories of people involved in DUI crashes who have had a history of DUI. And I think it's wonderful that you're going to do outreach to bar owners and the industry, and we're going to do targeted stuff. Do we need to ask the legislature for new tools?
You know, that's a good question, and I think that there's always room for additional enforcement tools. I think we have some that we can, that are on the legislative agenda. But, you know, we had the Health Department on our task force for this specific reason. Impairment and drug addiction, alcohol addiction are very, very profound issues that are, we as a transportation bureau are not going to be able to solve on our own. I don't believe that enforcement is the only answer to these types of behaviors. You need social services to intervene on addictive behaviors when people are getting behind the wheel impaired. I do think, I lost my train of thought.
Want to add one thing?
Yeah, maybe it'll help me remember what I was going to say.
Well, Lee is gathering thoughts. One area that a lot of data supported one of our actions, Action I-5, was about increasing access to the DUI-intensive supervision program, the DISP program. And this is something that maybe even Judge Todd could speak to, I believe he's planning to speak today. And Judge Todd and other experts in the room really agreed that if you can do a diversion program and can do it early enough with first, second, third-time offenders, it's a very effective tool, and the research supports that. There is some complexities in the way that the law is currently written, and I won't go into the various measures, but we're committed to working on that through this action item with the court systems to make that more accessible and hopefully funded program.
So I think almost all of us here can tell stories about having people with substance abuse problems within our families, particularly alcohol. And so I am entirely sympathetic to the idea that it's, for many people, it's something that can be treated and addressed. The problem is, our society has had a very poor record of actually following through and funding those kinds of things.
Yes.
We talked, we had a big, you know, to-do about community-based mental health facilities when we closed larger facilities, and what we ended up was putting a lot of people on the sidewalk. So, in a perfect world, what you say makes sense, but I still, when I read about the person that's been involved in the second, third, or fourth DUI, and they kill someone, the thing that I think the average person reacts by saying, "Why the hell do they still have a car?" And if you come back and say, "Well, we've got to be careful about not, you know, targeting people who are vulnerable," or whatever, I get that, I get the scream. But I still, we have to come back to, why the hell are people in the car? And I, and life is unfair, but if someone is repeatedly putting the public at risk, why the hell are they still getting into a car?
Well, you know, we can trade stories, I think, but one of the things, just to give you an example, I did a ride-along with Traffic Division one night, and we pulled a gentleman over for DUI. And when we took him in to do his booking, he had been arrested previously 34 times for DUI. He was out on a suspended license, his license, you know, he's on parole, and it was his 34th time. So I was talking to the officer about this, I mean, my mind was blown, this is absolutely, you know, just mind-blowing to me. There are all sorts of resources that we need to bring to bear to solve these issues. There are upstream issues, right? We need to do the addiction recovery prevention program, but there's also downstream. There are limited resources in our jail. They don't have enough spaces in the jail if we think that enforcement incarceration is the answer, so they triage the people that are in there. You have repeated offenders that they let go because of their triaging space in their jail. And so, until that person actually causes harm to another, they're going to be back out on our streets. And I don't know that this, that we, we don't have the resources necessary to address that all at once. So I think, I'm just saying all this to say that there is a huge spectrum of solutions that we need to be working on, and that's why our task force was so big, that's why we have brought so many people to the table, and that we all need to be thinking collectively about upstream, current, and downstream approaches to impaired driving. And the other thing that I remembered I was going to say is, if you think about Mothers Against Drug Driving was incredibly effective at the time that it came out, and it's because there was a strong group of people who socially stigmatized a behavior, and it had prevalent communication, but it also had enforcement on the back end.
Commissioner, may I add a comment to that? I don't disagree with you at all that somebody with repeated DUIs should not get into a car, but as Director Treat just kind of suggested, even if people's licenses are suspended or taken away, that doesn't physically prevent them from getting into a car. And in general, I think Judge Todd will tell you this, in sort of law enforcement, swiftness and certainty of sanction are more important than the severity. So, even though, again, I would not object to it, but even if you increased the penalties on people for drunk driving, people who do irrational things tend to keep on doing irrational things, hoping they're not going to get caught. There is one way to reduce excessive drinking across the board, which is to raise the price of alcohol. And we, as a city, are prohibited from imposing an alcohol tax by state law. The city of Chicago, faced with a similar preemption relating to tobacco taxes, decided that, well, I think that they passed a law saying they were going to try to adopt a tobacco tax, but if it turned out to be preempted, they were simply going to mandate that the price of cigarettes go up. Not a tax, simply that the price of cigarettes go up. So that is actually an option that I had been planning to pursue if I'd gotten re-elected, which I will to you. The idea of the city passing a law which raises the price of alcohol in order to deter excessive drinking and therefore DUIs.
In the same spirit here, I think we're all frustrated at the number of fatalities and accidents, and I sort of have a laundry list of ideas that I've played around with. You may not want to write them down, because I usually get laughed at when I mention them. But one idea is...
Not today, you didn't provide a point.
Okay. What about, I mean, we know that drunk drivers get right behind the wheel and drive, license suspended or not. So I've often thought maybe one solution to that would be to require that you display a valid driver's license in order to purchase gasoline. So, throw that out there for consideration. Secondly, and I think, Commissioner Noah, you kind of alluded to this maybe in your opening remarks, I mean, technology is such today that I also think, why, or could we, and again, I get a lot of laughter when I raise this idea, but could we jam cellphones within, say, 250 feet of high-crash intersections, except for 911 calls? I think somehow there's probably a way to do that technologically, whether it meets acceptance, or even, I'd go so far as to say even along our high-crash corridors...
Yes.
Jam all cellphone coverage.
And that's technically feasible, I think I saw Maurice in the room here, but I was part of the Smart Cities team, and we did ask that question of Waze, and we asked that question of other cellphones. It is technically, not only technically feasible to jam it or to provide notice, but it's technically feasible to shut it down.
Yeah.
Now, whether they're willing to do that or not is another story, and Waze was testing kind of a push notification in, I think it was Jakarta, in somewhere, you know, not in North America. They weren't, they were willing to have the conversation, but they weren't there yet in terms of the technology because of their business model, you know. But I think if we continue to work through the national Vision Zero network, we continue to work through the National Smart Cities Collective, and we cross those things of working with our technology partners, putting safety first, we could get there.
Margie, can I just, to Dan's point, it sounds like an intriguing idea, but what do you do about the person in the backseat that's on the cellphone?
I don't know.
Or what do you do about the person that's on an emergency call, sitting in the passenger seat? I mean, if you shut down all the cellphone traffic, I mean, as we're told, I mean, you know, some of the police officers have reminded me that there is, there is an occasional exception where you're allowed to use your cellphone in a way that we would otherwise consider, you know, unacceptable, which is, you're on the road and you see an accident, and you call emergency, the emergency line. You should pull over, but there is a chance you may be stuck in traffic and can't, but you're, you're encouraged to make that call safely, so.
My final, you know, I realize there's a lot of what-ifs associated with these suggestions.
Yeah.
And the final one, and this one I actually will be pushing forward, our legislative briefing next week, or two weeks from now, and I've raised this before, every time the police come before us to talk about their enforcement missions on overtime, they know my question by heart now. That is, we have these photo radars now, so if we get a picture of somebody speeding, and they happen to be texting or on their phone, can we also cite them for that? So I, I'm serious about that one.
Yeah.
That one, I think, we need, probably need legislative approval, and I'd like to see us really try that.
The, there is a legislative and policy answer to that question, there's a technical answer to that question. The technical answer is we can, we do have access to the photos of people driving, and we do see quite a few people on their phones. So you can see them in the camera.
Right.
Whether we have the authority to cite them through that is an entirely different question, I don't believe we do at this time.
Okay, those are my crazy ideas.
I wanted to comment on that piece. Some of us use the phone for their wayfinding, for the route, and I think that's a positive thing, that if I'm not trying to read the very small street names that might be not very well-lit, but I've got a GPS that's telling me turn now, that's a safety thing, so I think it's a good conversation, I think we should continue it. Do we have any statistics on that? Statistics on, have there been any crashes involving a transportation network company drivers, like Uber and Lyft, et cetera? And if not, could we please make sure that that's part of the annual report? And also, obviously taxis, because that's was part of the conversation that we had. It would be known to, be good to know how many professional drivers are in crashes and where. I did very much appreciate the report with the names on it. One of the most important things, and also one of the most difficult things that I do every year, is to go to Pioneer Courthouse Square to read the names of Holocaust survivors with the Jewish Federation. And it's, it's really important to give the names of people who have gone to. I liked even better that you've got the names on a map, so that this is where visually these people were killed. I'm wondering, do you have any information on crashes on the interstates? We've talked about Portland's streets, does that include, first of all, all the state streets, but also the interstates?
Yes, yeah, the numbers that we looked at are fatal and serious crashes that occurred within the city of Portland on all streets owned by ODOT as well as the city of Portland.
Yeah, again, if next year, there could be a breakout of which ones were on the highways, because that's where you're, in some ways, allowed to go faster, and you don't expect to experience pedestrians or cyclists, so that would be good information. I appreciate that. I did look at the graphs, and I was wondering, why are the cyclist deaths on Broadway so much higher than the rest of the high fatality streets or crashes?
There is a, especially with biking, there's a correlation between riders per capita, like of travelers, and the amount of crashes. So what the crash map doesn't show you is how many bikes are at that point at one moment, and Broadway is one of our most popular bike routes.
And are they spread out along Broadway, or are there particular intersections that we should look at?
My memory, and Clay, if you have anything to add, or anybody, let me know, is that the hotspots are in both ends of the bridgehead. And if you think about it, there's coming, you know, into downtown, there's coming off of a hill, there's kind of a blind intersection there. The other side of Broadway is, there's a lot of highway movement on and off-ramp, so they're both complicated intersections at those bridgeheads, is what I remember from the crashes. Anything else on that?
Yeah, I would just add that before the bridgehead on the east side, it's also where the I-5 off-ramp is, where there have been a significant number of serious crashes.
And hopefully, as we continue to look at the data, we're going to be able to see we did this and that made a difference. I know that the cyclists having right-of-way, when the cars are going onto the Broadway Bridge versus off on Williams, I think, hopefully, we can get some data on this works, and let's do it somewhere else as well. I noticed 3% of establishments have 22% of the citations. Are you working with the Office of Neighbor involvement to perhaps report those businesses to OLCC?
So, what, we have not done that yet, but what we are in the process of doing is working with the OLCC to join our implementation task force, because we recognize through all this data collection analysis what a critical role they're going to play in implementation. And we're happy to include ONI if that's...
Well, yes, I know that our folks would be more than, especially now we have the cannabis program as well, and we're going to have some revenue from cannabis, so very happy to be able to work on that. I just wanted to mention to anybody watching at home who wants to do more, that we have our Legislative Agenda Priority Setting meeting tonight from 6:00 to 9:00 at the Tabor Space, which is 54411, 5441 Southeast Belmont. So, I know we have some community organizers here and others. If you want to know, first of all, how to lobby with the legislature, and secondly, what should the city put on our Legislative Agenda as priorities, that's an opportunity. what should the city put on our legislative agenda as priorities, that's an opportunity. I think those are all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, let's do a time check. How many invited panelists do you have, and then how many people do we have signed up?
Five invited.
Five invited?
Fifteen people signed up.
Fifteen? Okay. Okay, thank you very much. We'll, I want you to call your invited panelists first.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Kristy Finney Dunn of Oregon and South West Washington, Families for Safe Streets, Judge Stephen Todd of Malden County Circuit Court, and standing in for Chief Myers, Assistant Fire Chief Don Russ. And they'll be followed by Joanne Haragol of Elders in Action and Noel McIlberry of Oregon Walks.
I guess that means I'm first.
Go ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Kristy Finney Dunn. I'm part of the Vision Zero Task Force and Oregon and South West Washington's Families for Safe Streets. You already heard my son's story featured, and that was very difficult for me, but I just want to say that two men were actually struck at the time that my son was killed. One was injured, and my son obviously died. They were riding in a bike lane, and an 18-year-old drunk driver hit and run them. Dustin was a college student. He was an advocate for equality for all people, and he was a son who said, "I love you, Mom," at every opportunity. I wasn't prepared emotionally or financially to bury my son, but when tragic crashes happen, you have to deal with them whether you're ready or not and whether you know how to or not. In the midst of mind-blowing grief and confusion, you must figure it out quickly. After the death of my son, I learned what real crying is. It's your body producing more tears than you ever thought imaginable, and it's making sounds like a wounded animal. It's breath stealing and stomach churning and heart clinching, and it's fearing that at times you may never be able to stop crying. I quickly learned that about 100 people per day are killed in the U.S., and I hadn't even noticed before. After hearing of a crash, I'd feel bad for a few seconds, and then move on, just like the news did. I didn't think anything would ever happen to my family. I didn't even think about it seriously until it did. And I've learned that studies that drivers engage in behaviors, they don't, drivers engage in behaviors they don't want other drivers to, because they believe they can handle it. They believe that they can drive unsafely because it's not unsafe for them, because they're better drivers. And so we get to Vision Zero. The zero in Vision Zero represents real people, not just a number. What may seem more realistic to people, say, Vision 100, is to imply that 100 people killed or injured is okay. We're good with that. Well, who are these 100 people whose lives are dispensable, whose loved ones grieving is acceptable? Are those who think that whatever number is more reasonable than zero all right if one of that number is someone they care about? What is more important than the safety of our family members, our coworkers, our neighbors, the person who takes care of our children, who delivers our food and serves our coffee? Zero. There are all kinds of ways to suffer from traffic collisions. I work in social services and daily talk to families on tan of cash assistance or food stamps because a car crash has resulted in injuries, lost jobs, homelessness, loss of transportation, addiction, and mental health problems. You passed a resolution to work toward Vision Zero, and I ask that you continue in that endeavor. We expect that you will keep this commitment and do what you must to make it happen, and happen quickly. And I heard this mentioned already, and I'm very excited about it, but what I have here is make every city employee driving a city vehicle be an example of how cars should be driven, including the police. Require your employees who drive city vehicles to take one or more of the Trauma Nurses Talk Tough classes, the Save the Road, or Share the Road class, the Safety Belt class, Hires Driver class. This teaches them the why and how of driving safely, and nearly everyone who takes that class, those classes, recommend that other people should, and I speak on victim panels for three of those classes. Families for Safe Streets members speak from tragic personal knowledge of why Vision Zero is crucial, as well as Dustin. Tracy was killed in a bike lane. Joe and Danielle were struck down in marked crosswalks. Cindy's husband Marcos died after being T-boned by a speeding driver, and Alexis fatally crashed while using her cellphone. Don't let more families qualify for our Families for Safe Streets group. While we continue to wait, the time is now. It's urgent, and it's imperative. Thank you for all of your work. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Judge? Thank you. Well, I want to thank the commissioners, particularly Commissioner Novak, for your leadership. And because of that, we have an excellent PBOT staff, and they pulled off an amazing project. It was such a thrill to be involved with that. I'm one of the judges in Traffic Court. A lot of Portlanders don't know that Portland doesn't have municipal court. Gresham doesn't have a municipal court. The Circuit Court handles all those traffic cases, and there are a lot. And I've lost track, about 100,000 tickets, I lost track. And I meet a lot of people in court. In fact, I've met some of you, and I'll tell you, I learn a lot from the letters I read and the people that I meet. And in my 19 years of doing this, I've learned that it's very hard to change people's behavior. Courts and laws and police are just not enough. We don't have enough police, but even if we did, it's not enough to change people's behavior. We need other solutions. We need education, engineering, and emergency services as well. New laws are not going to work if they're hard to enforce, and police find that they're hard to enforce. They're not going to work unless drivers and cyclists and pedestrians know about these laws and understand these laws, and that's a major problem in Oregon. New laws are not going to work if drivers, cyclists, and pedestrians don't know the reasons behind the laws and why it's so important to follow them. In fact, I think some of you may have seen a brochure that's been produced that shows that your likelihood of killing somebody is so much higher at 40 miles an hour than 20 miles an hour, even 30 miles an hour. 10 miles an hour can make a big difference, but most drivers don't understand that, and that's part of the reason we have such a speeding problem in Portland. I think education of all our road users is crucial, and it's a crucial part of this plan. It's a problem statewide. I think it's terrible. I think it's unforgivable that someone can get their license and drive for 50, 60, 70 years without ever having any more education about all the new laws that are passed and all the new hazards that arrive, that arise. And I see this every day in court, that are just shocked to find out about all these new laws that are 10, 20 years old, but they never heard about them and they're not aware of them. I think we need to educate all drivers, not just when they're brand-new, but throughout their driving history. And that also includes cyclists and pedestrians. We have a lot of new challenges in Portland for road users, particularly involving cyclists and pedestrians, and we're seeing a lot of our deaths are those groups rather than motorists. The city can improve our infrastructure, but we need to educate road users on how to use our streets safely. You can put in rapid flashing beacons, you can put in new safety devices and new bike lanes and bike boxes and charros and all kinds of other things, but unless people know what they are, they're not going to be using them effectively, and we're still going to have traffic deaths. I think distracted driving is the worst problem we're going to face in the future. It's much more prevalent than we can prove with our research, because it's very difficult. I thought it was interesting, the questions about the photographs. I do see people in their cars going through red lights and photographs using their phones, so we know that it happens. It's not enough to prohibit use of a cellphone while driving. The important thing is drivers need to know how dangerous it really is and how much it can cause crashes. Until people see the reason for those laws, they're going to try and cheat and do it themselves, and that results in crashes. Well, Vision Zero, I hope you realize, is not just a plan, it's a process. It really is a process and should be a process, and I'm really excited that the task force is going to continue. We're going to continue to meet and share information, share ideas, and evaluate what's happening and what progress we've made, and then improve the plan. It's not a static thing. It's going to improve and change with the meetings that we have. The partnership that the city has put together is just amazing. It's a powerful force for traffic safety, and I really want to thank you for supporting that partnership. Thank you.
Any questions?
Certainly.
And just for the record, I don't think you and I have met in your courtroom or outside of your courtroom, but I'm struck by what you said earlier about not having updates to driver ed.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm particularly struck, because I got a notice in the mail within the last month saying I have to re-up my registration. And as part of that, I got to take my car to a DEQ facility to have it inspected, to have it checked out. So it's interesting, we put more of a premium on having my car checked out than to have me updated in terms of my driver education. So that's a very interesting comment you made. But since you are the expert in the courtroom enforcing the law, are there any changes in the law that would make your job easier? Or would give you more tools to be effective in what you care about?
I think we have the tools other than the basic resources. What we need is to be able to send more people to traffic schools, and we're doing a lot of that. And the police have really supported us with that, that we're sending more and more drivers to driver education programs. And it's really amazing, because one person going to that program will tell 10 friends about the laws they learned about and the hazards they learned, they'll tell people about what cyclists faced. It's really amazing how that just blossoms and blooms. So I think what we're doing now is working well. Now, I think the police bureau needs a lot more resources to do what they're doing. The Traffic Division is doing an awesome job, but they don't have nearly enough to do their jobs. Chief Russ?
Commissioners, my name, like I said, my name is Don Russ, Special Operations Deputy Chief, Portland Fire and Rescue. On behalf of Chief Myers, we are in support of Vision Zero. I was on the task force personally. It was a great task force. I was educated through the process. As emergency responders, our members see and experience firsthand the deadly and serious impacts of traffic violence that occur to our citizens on our streets. It's tragic. And we, as an organization, we agree with Commissioner Novak's message in the plan that our citizens deserve safe streets to walk, bike, operate mobility devices, and access transit and drive. This year alone, Portland Fire and Rescue has responded to over 900 traffic crashes involving pedestrians, bicycles, and motor vehicles. And as the director stated and informed you, counsel, that, you know, we're at 38 people died on the streets this year. We surpassed last year's number of 37, so we're trending upward, and that is a concern. So it's our desire to partner with Portland Bureau of Transportation to meet the objectives of this plan through community outreach and road design agreements. Our public education office has been connecting with the community for decades to advocate the message of fire and life safety. These educational resources can be used to deliver the Vision Zero message to neighborhoods, specifically to high-crash networks and communities of concern. It's our desire to utilize our members in the field to deliver this concept, outline, these concepts outlined in this plan. We can do this by just taking our companies in service, move them out to the areas where there's going to be an outreach community event, post a vehicle there. We're already working on some tools through brochures with, between the two bureaus, with our public education office as we speak, to develop some, just some tools to give, to equip our people in the field to just get the message out of the plan. We also understand, in order to meet these goals of plan, there is some road design changes that must occur in the high-impact areas. This concerns me as a Special Operations Deputy Chief. Many of these road design changes come across my desk weekly. I'm working closely with the engineers, and we're working collaboratively to try to make some concessions at Portland Fire and Rescue. For years, this has been a challenge with us, when we talk about speed tables, and now we use speed cushions for calming devices. So concessions are made. Commissioner Myers is very big on walkability scores and safe streets, and this is very important to him. And so he is, when he caught wind of this plan, right when he got here, he's only been here since April, disinterested him. He came from St. Charles, well, he came from the Midwest, and walkability scores were very poor over there. And he really embraces the fact that he can walk on these streets, but he wants them to be safe for both bicyclists and pedestrians. So we're aware that some of these concessions got to be made at times, but saving lives is the number-one priority, and we understand that. So we want to work collaboratively, and we're going to explore those alternative road designs and to keep everybody, keep our citizens safe. So on behalf of Chief Myers and Portland Fire and Rescue, we solely, fully support this Vision Zero plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Two others?
Yes, I think Joanne Haragol from Elders in Action and Noel McIlberry of Oregon Walks are here.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Joanne Haragol, Elders in Action Deputy Director. Elders in Action was pleased to participate in the Vision Zero Task Force. We educate, advocate, and serve older adults in the Portland metropolitan area. We serve specifically the lower-income and more vulnerable portion of the adults over 60 in the area. We regularly hear stories from our volunteers and from our clients, reporting that they've been injured while crossing intersections in wheelchairs, hit by cars while riding their bikes, or injured or nearly injured while simply just crossing at a crosswalk. The Vision Zero Task Force was a diverse and engaged group of passionate people who often had disparate views on the best way to eliminate deaths and serious injuries on our Portland streets. One of my biggest takeaways, as you all have noted, from this process was that the causes of serious traffic injuries and fatalities are varied, and one size does not fit all when it comes to the solutions to these kinds of issues. What is needed is a toolbox of ideas and strategies that allows flexibility but also ensures equitable treatment of all ages, transportation modes, socioeconomic backgrounds, and geographical locations. And I think Vision Zero does a really good job of creating that kind of a toolbox. During the action, the action plan development process, Elders in Action and AARP co-sponsored our own little mini sort of input session. We had about eight people there, and while it was a small group, they had a lot to say. And mostly, they expressed concerns and proposed solutions that were very varied, and in many cases conflicted. The comment that best summarizes the discussion in total was, there is so much to watch out for on the streets. So bikes, pedestrians, wheelchairs, people with headphones, our streets are getting more and more chaotic. In general, those attending the input session that we held recommended solutions that tended to slow speeds down on our streets. And I heard today, I think the judge mentioned, that the World Health Organization has data that shows that 90%, there's a 90% chance of survival when someone is struck by a car traveling at 19 miles per hour, but there's a less than 50% chance of surviving impact at 28 miles per hour, so, or higher. I applaud PBOT, particularly Leah Treet, her staff, and Commissioner Novak for allowing this diverse group of organizations and individuals to provide input on this action plan, and I look forward to the success of the plan through its action items in eliminating serious traffic injuries and fatalities in Portland streets within the next nine years. So we really have to get out there and start getting to work. Thank you.
Hi, Commissioners. My name's Noel McIlberry. I'm the Executive Director of Oregon Walks. We are the state's pedestrian advocacy organization, and we're a member of the Vision Zero Task Force. We have also been pushing for Vision Zero since early 2014, when we just got fed up with kind of piecemeal actions after fatalities, because we never had a roadmap of what to do. And we didn't want to see any more families struggling after a crash happened to one of their family members. As you've heard today, for people walking, this is a really critical issue, as people on foot make up a disproportionate number of the people who are impacted by crashes. In 2015, over 50% of the crashes in Portland were people on foot. The national average is about 14%. So Portland is unique in the sense that people on foot are at risk, and I think if you've spent time walking in East Portland, you can see exactly why. So we were heartened when City Council adopted the goal of Vision Zero in 2015, and this action plan is really a necessary next step to see this become a reality, as we've already seen that uptick this year in number of deaths on our roads. We really have to get to work. However, we're also extraordinarily thankful to the city for taking the time to develop this plan with a wide group of stakeholders to ensure that it meets the unique needs of Portland and the people who live here. Oregon Walks is also a member of the Transportation Justice Alliance. Many members of that group participated in the task force as well, and I'm also delivering support from that group for the adoption of this plan. We continue to urge the city of Portland to push towards a more equitable and just transportation system, and we're supportive of the equity lens that has been applied to the plan, and appreciative of the integration of input that many task force members provided to make the plan more effective at treating street safety concerns without adding disparate impact on people of color and low-income communities. The city of Portland is not the first city to adopt Vision Zero, but it's the first to take such a thoughtful approach to equity. There are some particular areas of the plan that I think are really important to note that we support. One is that increased unchecked enforcement doesn't create safe streets for everyone, but really being strategic about training for officers, using fixed-speed cameras, and doing extensive community outreach, along with any enforcement actions. The use of the communities-of-concern lens to prioritize investments is critical. As I mentioned, East Portland sees a lot of traffic fatalities, and this is where there's a high proportion of low-income families, communities of color, and aging populations. These neighborhoods have not seen the type of investment that's needed to ensure that they can get to where they need to go safely. With these investments being planned, community engagement is going to be critical. We can't just assume that we know what every community needs to feel safe, and I think the city plan has been really cognizant of that in incorporating accountability and engagement measures to ensure that communities know what's happening in their neighborhoods and know why. And lastly, the expanded commitment to legislation... And lastly, the expanded commitment to legislation that increases access to driver education, testing, and licensing. Our current system for allowing Oregon residents to access that has been fairly exclusive, and we really need to think broadly about how people are able to receive education. As Judge Todd really talked about, that is crucial for everyone that's using our roadways. This is an exciting opportunity for the city to work in partnership with advocates to create a more inclusive and just system. And we really look forward to continuing to be engaged on this plan. Vision Zero has to be collaborative. We saw that through the task force, and we really plan to be engaged on this to ensure that we can reach that goal of zero deaths in nine years. I want to thank you all for your commitment to this issue over the last year, and look forward to seeing it go into action. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to public testimony. Carla, do you want to call the first three?
They are Terry Parker, Alan Bueller, and Robert Reed, and they'll be followed by Craig Rogers, Dan McFarlane, and Rob Sedowski.
Do we need a third? Maybe somebody left?
Terry Parker, Alan Bueller, Robert Reed, Craig Rogers. Oh, here comes the third person. Sorry.
This is Rob Sedowski, but have a seat. Okay, Terry, I know you were here early today.
Yes. I had to be. Terry Parker, fourth-generation Portlander. A few weeks ago, I was waiting at a red light on Northeast 122nd. Just as the left turn signal turned green, a bicyclist came whizzing by, splitting between the left-turn lane and the regular travel lane. Both full of cars then made a wide-left turn onto the cross street directly in front of the car just starting to turn left. In the Hollywood District, bicycles blow through stop signs, round corners at speed, and otherwise demonstrate they have no intention of following any kind of traffic laws. Likewise, I often observe pedestrians simply step off the street, and step off the curb and into the street even without looking in both directions or being aware of traffic. An evasive response by drivers isn't always possible when pedestrians, and especially bicyclists, do not show any intelligence. Bicyclists seem to think they can do no wrong and refuse to follow the same rules they expect drivers to follow. Pedestrians seem to expect that crosswalks, marked or unmarked, will automatically protect them. These attitudes are being paroflated by the city's car-hater mindset and Discriminating Comp Plan 9.6, the hierarchy that ranks pedestrians and bicyclists at the top and tax-paying motorists that fund infrastructure at the bottom. In other words, the city must take some responsibility when the behavior of pedestrians and bicyclists do not show any intelligence or create chaos. Vision Zero will fail if the city continues to only focus on profile and always blame the wrongdoing on drivers. Vision Zero will fail if the city thinks road diets that push traffic onto other streets create a different set of safety issues, more congestion, and more emissions will solve the problems. What percentage of the total traffic in Portland is carried on the 8% of multilane streets? That question hasn't been answered, to my satisfaction. Vision Zero will continue to fail without specific and proportional motorist representation on all PBOT committees and community-wide participation in developing a bicycle user fee or tax. Excluding motorist-specific seats at the table and creating special interest stacked-deck committees violates the city's own equity policy that includes the statement, "The community is a full and equal decision-making partner in all aspects of the city of Portland." It also violates the broad intent of the Privileges and Immunities Clause in the Oregon Constitution. Also, with numerous crashes related to alcohol, maybe better management of consumption is needed, including a background check and a license required to buy alcohol and drink. In brief, what is needed are bicyclists following the same traffic laws drivers are expected to comply with, pedestrians making themselves aware of traffic conditions before stepping onto into the cross streets, education enforcement that equally applies to all modes and communities, and an end to the bureaucratic car-hater mindset that must include driver equity with proportional motorist-specific representation on all PBOT committees. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Wow. My name's Robert Reed. I've lived in Portland about 40 years. I've commuted by bicycle downtown from North Portland, about 25 of that. Incidentally, I would have been killed probably 15 years ago if I was the kind of cyclist that this gentleman on my left described, and most other cyclists would as well. But what I'm here to say today is that, first of all, of course, I support Vision Zero, but I think you should take this as an opportunity to address a change in the driving culture of Portland. If you've lived here long enough, you remember days when it was actually considered normal for people to be courteous on the roads. I was told when I moved here that Portlanders don't use their car horn, because it was considered impolite, and that was true. Nowadays, it's a question of which caliber you load, not a question of whether you use your horn anymore. We have an entirely different culture on the roads, probably because they're twice as busy as they were when I first moved here, and people have come from places where aggressive and fast driving was the norm, and it was accepted. That excludes, of course, cyclists and pedestrians from having any rights, and I'm certainly not suggesting we need new laws. The ones on the book are plenty sufficient. But what we need to do is to slow people down. If you slow drivers down, the incidents, the amount of crashes goes down, and the severity of crashes goes down. I want to thank you very much for lowering the speed limits in my neighborhood, where I live in North Portland. But without law enforcement up there, people are going to continue to drive just as they have the last few years. I went to the scene of a fatal accident two blocks from my house this summer, and noticed that there were 12 police officers there for about four or five hours. Most of them were just holding down the perimeter of the scene, the other ones were collecting evidence. Detectives came, the forensic people came. I know they have report writing. Fatal accidents go to the grand jury, where they've got more sitting outside the grand jury and waiting. If it goes to trial in a criminal case, there are dozens more hours of overtime for officers sitting on the bench waiting to be called. I am requesting that you take some of those police, those many thousands of police hours that we're using to deal with problems once people have been killed, and put some traffic enforcement on the street so that we can prevent these accidents in the first place. Unfortunately, the people that just are going to drive fast and not care about anyone else's rights seem to not learn unless there's law enforcement involved, and I would sure love to see some of that in our neighborhood. Otherwise, you're going to continue to see people painting their own darn crosswalks on the street, and I'm all for that, if that's what it takes. If the city won't do it, citizens are going to have to start doing it. Thank you very much for your consideration of these issues.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rob Sedowski. I represent the Bicycle Transportation Alliance, soon to be the Street Trust, starting January 1st. This is really exciting. I want to first thank Steve Novak. Commissioner Novak never once said no. He always said, "How will this work?" He asked questions, and I think all of you are really great, about not starting with no, but starting with yes, and trying to help us figure this out. This is a bold plan. This is not just some words on a piece of paper. These are action steps that the city is going to take across different bureaus. Unfortunately, we can't do this all alone, and so some thoughts for the future. We need our county involved. Multnomah County and other counties should step up to support Vision Zero policies and any opportunities that you have to share with your fellow leaders in Multnomah County, Washington County, and Clackamas County, who was the first county to support Vision Zero in our region, by the way. Secondly, our state lags far behind where we are. Where our Portland Bureau of Transportation says, "Yes, how do we make this happen?", we still hear "No" from the Oregon Department of Transportation. And so what do we need to do in order to reach Vision Zero in Portland is take back some streets. So I encourage you to look creatively at how we can bring Barber, Powell, 82nd Street, Columbia into the portfolio of our city so that we can truly make a difference. ODOT spends very little money on state safety programs. In fact, they hardly use any to none of their highway safety program for pedestrian and bicycle safety, even though we far outnumber the number of crashes and percentages. Lastly, I'd like to just thank you for making this data-driven. That's, we know we're not going to do things unless it's proven to work, and that's really, really exciting. Thank you all for your leadership. I'm excited to hear you vote, and look forward to partnering with you, whether it's on community safety events that we can help out, educating our youth and educating our adults on how to ride safely. We're really excited, so thank you very much.
What's your new name again?
The Street Trust.
The Street Trust.
So we're expanding our mission, including walking in transit, particularly the idea of you shouldn't be designing roads for one user. When you design roads for one user, you're not designing for anyone.
Thank you.
We've had conversations.
Thank you. Thank you all. Next three?
First is Alan Bueller, and we'll take Craig Rogers, Dan McFarlane, Elaine Friesen Strang. What about Betsy? Oh, here she is. And then next, I have Betsy Reese, Arlene Kumora, and Doug Klotz.
Okay, welcome. Just give us your name, and you each have a...
Craig Rogers. And this is a very, very important subject to me. And I'll start off by saying that last year on February 22nd, something came to my attention that really rocked my boat. And down in Springfield, here's the headline. Police, "Three Kids Crossing Main Street in Crosswalk Hit/ Killed by Car." During daylight hours, again, in a crosswalk with their mother, and a gentleman, distracted driver, didn't even know it until he hit him and killed him. I was totally shook up reading this thing, and that's why I'm here, because I want to do something about that. And they were ages four to eight, so that was a feeling in my heart. I want to do something about it, and I got a lot of skin in the game, been attending a lot of meetings, paying a lot of attention. And then when Fallen Smart was killed on Hawthorne, totally preventable accident. And then in the last week, there was a gentleman that was in a crosswalk with the lights flashing, and a car hit and killed him out in East Portland. So now we're between Thanksgiving and Christmas. Having lived here now for 65 years, I know this is a really dangerous time, so we're going to have to really pay attention. And yet, reading automobile magazines like I do, did you know that for years they've been talking about a 24-volt system for cars? And that's because there's so many devices in it that it stresses out the 12-volt. So to have more devices in your car, you got to have a 24-volt. You know, think about that. I mean, we got to really pay attention about these things and get them ahead of time before they become acceptable. So when I was a teenager in the '60s, and I'm watching, maybe it was Mothers Against Drunk Driving on the TV, and they would say, "One drink an hour, whether it's wine, a beer, or hard liquor. That's what your body can metabolize and still be underneath the legal limit." But now, the legal limit has dropped down, for good reason. But here in Portland, you go into a tavern, and it's easy to order up, not a 12-ounce, but a pint of beer could be 8% alcohol. It's not 3.2 like it was back in the '60s. So I have said for years, and this makes my friends laugh, I live in Portland where everything's okay and nobody's responsible. And you wonder, "Well, is that true?" But look at the trajectory of this livability survey that just came out in Portland. It's all going down, down, because I live in Portland where everything's okay and nobody's responsible, and I think it's about time that we start being responsible, and it's a matter of life and death.
Craig, your time's up. Thanks. Sir, would you like to go?
Yes, thank you. My name is Dan McFarlane. I got my start in Portland at a manual hospital in 1947. Before my first birthday, my great-grandfather was killed by a motorist on the streets of Portland. Like one of the previous testifiers, I am a fourth-generation Portland resident of Portland. I don't know how that's relevant, but I think other than that, our viewpoints differ dramatically. I chuckled this morning when I read a post from Trimate. The headline read, "How Trimate is Staying Ahead of the Curve with Its Next-Gen Fair Collection System." Trimate should be commended for the new fair collection system, but we are not ahead of the curve. We have already had more fatalities before November ended than we did in the previous I appreciate the excellent work that has been accomplished by Vision Zero, but there's a key component that is missing. The needed reduction in traffic fatalities will not be realized without an increased emphasis on frequent, reliable public transportation. Since the 1980s, our transit system has been poorly planned. Ridership has declined on a per capita basis. Recently, ridership actually declined while our population, the actual numbers of riders declined while our population has grown. We are not ahead of the curve. Ridership numbers tell us that our public transit system is failing. If you want vision, look to Seattle. Three decades ago, Seattle was a nightmare. Today, they are deeply engaged in developing a coordinated system of light rail, commuter rail, buses, and streetcars. They are providing a faster alternative to single-occupant vehicles. Effective public transportation must be a key component of Vision Zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Elaine?
Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to testify. My name is Elaine Friesen Strang. I'm a Portland resident. I'm the volunteer state president for AARP Oregon. I'm a member of Portland's Age-Friendly Transportation Committee, and I serve on the Elders in Action Senior Advisory Council. According to the 2016 community survey recently released by our city auditor, pedestrians in Portland are feeling less safe on our streets than they were in 2012. This concern is felt more strongly in older adults, which is not an unfounded fear. According to the Oregon Walks 2015 State of Pedestrian Safety Report, adults aged 65 and older are four times more likely to be killed while walking in the streets than people younger. Yet, as we get older and we limit our driving, or we choose to hang up our keys, we rely more on transit and walking to buy our groceries, to get to needed services, and to be active in our communities. Last year, I asked my fellow senior advisory council members to sign the Vision Zero pledge, and as Joanne earlier said, AARP and Elders in Action sponsored a Vision Zero workshop. We can agree to take personal responsibility, but we also need the help of our city to take necessary steps to assure the safety of all its residents. I applaud Commissioner Novak, Director Treet, the PBOT staff for their leadership in developing this action plan. It addresses equity issues, the need for better data, education, education, education and enforcement. It takes the vision of zero traffic fatalities and shows how we can make it a reality with public engagement and accountability at its core. I urge the council to adopt this plan. I also encourage the other necessary partners, including the Portland Police and the Oregon State Speed Control Board, to join in this effort. Getting where you need to go, or following your doctor's advice to get out and get more exercise, shouldn't result in your death. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next three.
Are Betsy Reese, Arlene Kumora, and Doug Klotz. And they'll be followed by Soren Impe, Art Llewellyn, and Corey Poole.
If you just give us your name, you each have three minutes, and we'll start with you, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Betsy Reese, and I've been a traffic safety advocate here in Portland for more than 20 years. For some reason, I never imagined that a member of my own family might be killed in a traffic crash. This is my mom, Millie Wagner. She was in a crash a year ago Mother's Day, and I, my three brothers and sister, watched her suffer for three days as she looked at us with her pleading eyes and held our hand. When we save lives, we never know what family we've spared this kind of grief. This happened in another state, in another major city. My sister and I photographed, measured, talked to people, researched, and found that there had been many, many serious crashes at the same location due to what appeared to be easily fixable changes in the roadway and speed. We contacted over 20 individuals in state and local traffic capacities, road conditions. Not one single person would speak to us. Not one single person would reply. In the 20 years I've been advocating in Portland, I've been in... I've been involved directly in many specific requests to both PBOT and ODOT, from small tweaks to very large projects. And I can say that a lot of those things have been addressed, right up to and including, and Amanda just mentioned, Broadway Street, a major project that was just completed the end of this summer at North Broadway, Flintton Wheeler, which had previously been every single year out of 22,000 intersections in the city of Portland in the top three for ambulance transport injury collisions with bicyclists and pedestrians. PBOT and ODOT coordinated together on a big project and made some significant changes there. A lot of people had a hand in that, including some in this room, including Commissioner Novick and Director Treat. My testimony today is to say thank you for what has been done here in this city. And let's keep it up and do more. Thank you.
Thank you. Elaine?
Thank you. My name is Arlene Kumora, and I'm here on behalf of the Portland Pedestrian Advisory Committee and myself. The pedestrian committee does support Vision Zero and strongly supports the work that PBOT is doing to move this forward. We are also like to note the following. Education is an essential factor in getting two people together, the pedestrians, the bikes, as well as the motorists. We also would like to have some note that in our part of town, in my part of town, most people are not native English speakers. At this point in time, the outreach needs to have happen in other languages. And we urge that PBOT strongly consider that, along with ODOT and Trimate and everyone else who's involved in the transit system. We also support a data-driven methodology, which we are really pleased to support in this effort. The other thing is, we must have enforcement. I understand, I am involved in a project where the Portland Police give driver education to non-English speakers. The information is that they have helped tremendously. There needs to be more of it. If you're not in high school, there is nothing for you. So between the ages of 18 and whatever, you're on your own, and you have to pay for driver education. And because you have low income, you're not going to do that. And you're going to continue to drive unsafely. And I urge this council to support that effort. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Doug Klotz. I've been advocating for pedestrian safety for 29 years in Portland. I appreciate all the work that went into this document and all the work of the task force. Certainly, many of the actions described in the plan, if carried out, will make a difference in traffic safety. So I'm not opposed to adoption of this plan. I am, however, disappointed that the plan does not seem to represent a major shift in priorities, nor specifically, nor does it commit the city to the sort of bold steps that the concept of Vision Zero originally included. I strongly feel that you need to add clear, binding language to the plan that states the city's plan to pursue speed reductions consistent with Vision Zero in order for it to be effective. I hope Rob is right, that it's not just words, but I'm worried. I looked at the Wikipedia entry. One of the first things you see in there on Vision Zero is a table of speeds. What are recommended speeds for various conditions? So for the condition, "locations with possible conflicts between pedestrians and cars." Well, that kind of describes the crash corridors, actually, almost all of our streets. For these situations, or conflicts are possible, the chart shows the recommended travel speed is 20 miles per hour. And that is something to think about, is that that is really what the Vision Zero goals and policies are saying across the world. That it's not just, you know, and that's not what I see in the plan, unfortunately. There's nothing specific about that. You know, the plan mentions safe speeds, but doesn't say what those would be. I think the city should really say, "We intend to lower driving speed to 20 miles an hour on as many streets as possible." And reconstruct streets, starting with a high-crash network, so the roads designed cause us users to drive at slower speeds. Maybe we won't get to 20, but that needs to be the direction we're heading. Right now, we have a high-crash network that is, you know, four- and five-lane streets with unprotected bicycle lanes, sidewalks that are not very well protected either, and 35- to 40- and 40-mile-an-hour speed limits. And I'm sure that travel speeds are faster than that. There is a proposal in the plan, number SD1, to build improvements on two segments and five intersections. But there's a lack of specificity as to what these improvements will be, and no mention of what the speeds are aimed for to be. So I fear that some of these goals may not be met because factors and other factors besides safety will be given equal or greater weight. Maybe I'm wrong. I hope I'm wrong. The upcoming Foster Road Diet appears to show the city is serious about this. And, you know, we'll see if that happens on Foster Road. But we have many other streets to deal with. And I think, yes, you should adopt this plan, but I really urge you to go to get more specific and take an even more forward-looking look at where we could be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I particularly appreciate in your letter, Doug, that you pointed out the state code about parking within 20 feet of any intersection. And so I think that that's something that we could certainly should pursue. That, yes, it might cut down on parking, and perhaps we would then consider parking somewhere else.
Yes. Okay, next three.
Are Sorin Impe, Art Llewellyn, and Corey Poole. And the last two who signed up will be Jim Howell and Everett Yaros.
It looks like we have room for maybe one more. Oh, sir, come on up. Welcome. Just give us your name, and you have three minutes, and we'll start with you.
Yes, my name is Sorin Impe, and I've lived in Portland for 17 years. And I've used a bike as my major transportation mode for essentially most of my life. And I also participate in bike advocacy with several groups, Bike Lab, PDX, and Livable Streets Action. But I wanted to note that I'm testifying here, you know, as myself. So I support the Vision Zero draft plan. However, I do not believe this plan is anywhere near bold enough. And I'm going to go into some details. But before I did that, I came here last month to testify. And I was locked out. And I was in the midst of a number of people in the streets. And I watched law enforcement, mace, beat and brutalize people using our streets peacefully. So I applaud the focus on equity in the context of Vision Zero. But I believe this city also needs to address long-term issues with equity and civil rights in law enforcement. So I call on the city to fix the binding arbitration clause so that law enforcement officers who are fired stay fired, and to move these to a civil service board, to block officers from reviewing body camera footage before writing reports.
Excuse me, would you please keep on topic?
Yes. And to immediately end, I believe this is on topic, because Vision Zero does focus on safe use of our streets by citizens, to immediately end police brutality at peaceful protests, to immediately end deployment of gang enforcement officers at peaceful protests, and to make all bargaining sessions with the Portland Police Association public. Thank you. So, getting back to Vision Zero, the draft plan. Funding of Vision Zero infrastructure is essential for reforms and its eventual success. And I see very little detail when it comes to funding in the Vision Zero plan. In fact, virtually no detail. Moreover, the plan lists possible actions. You know, there's a two-year phase. But how these will be funded, how they will be implemented, is not detailed. And it reminds me of the Portland Bike Plan, which is a similar gray plan. You know, I love the language in both plans. And I like the aspirational aspects of those plans. But there really isn't sufficient funding. And we've seen that since the Bike Plan has been funded, there's been very little change in bike mode share. So I really believe there needs to be a focus on finding dedicated funding. And then finally, I'd like to address what I see as a real issue in the Vision Zero plan when it comes to vulnerable road users. In the plan, it talks about persons' clothing not visible as a causal factor in fatal collisions. And another graphic highlights a person illegally in a roadway. And this echoes Portland Bureau of Transportation's safety plans that suggest pedestrians should not, should wear Hy-Vee's clothing and wear lighting. And it just, to me, comes across as victim blaming.
Okay, Mr. Impe, your time's up. Thank you.
Okay.
Sir, go ahead.
I'm Art Llewellyn. And may I just mention the civil rights as a point to agree with the person who just led me. Civil rights in some way, I saw it, so I'd agree. I've been coming before City Hall for so many years now and submitting design material for transit systems. I'm like Dan McFarlane. I believe it's a chicken and the egg question of whether we can manage our traffic without a functional transit. He's right. And so my, of course, my three minutes, shorter if possible, might not make my point, that I can only add to, and Jim Howell's fault, I'm sorry. We'll meet to consider. So I've submitted a couple of things for you. I can just mention them in brief. I'd like to formally request a review. Got a debate about how mass transit really should grow. And I'm making some points that I'm not getting addressed. So formally, may I? And transportation planning on my side is holistic. All modes must function, or else none function. So transit users are, first of all, walkers. I myself own now five bicycles, standards, and four folding bikes, which are great interacting with pedestrian environments. So this small folding bike is the slowest one. It's easiest to step onto. That was my, the way I present material, it's all in there. And so we're on top of the transit transportation system mode. We have to consider that our development is part of that. That's also important, I think, as part of my philosophy. I'm sort of aligned with metro, metro and the regional planning. The documents they have there, I'm sure Jim has submitted them. If they haven't, they will. It's the type, I've taken his drawing on that regional light rail and said, "Here's another way to do that." So we're debating that. It's an important debate, and there's a lot to learn. Vision Zero people, I congratulate them for getting this far. And I know they're going to learn a lot, and we're going to, it's inevitable. So with that, that formal request, I think it could kind of be a convenient response in an email or something.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sir?
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Corey Poole. I'm here today speaking on behalf of the thousands of Portlanders that use skateboards to get around our city. I am also speaking as a father of an eight-year-old who loves to walk, bike, and skate around our neighborhood. I'm here in support of Vision Zero today. I would like to thank the members of the task force for their hard work in creating the draft proposal. We're all devastated over the tragic loss of life in the past year on our roadways. The principles laid out in the draft plan have been proven to work, and I think will work. We have the opportunity to make real progress towards a transportation network that's safe for all Portlanders. We need this to be more than a report on a shelf. In order to see the benefits of this plan, it will take an ongoing dedication, ensuring that we put safety first. We need to be willing to put human lives ahead of parking spaces. We need to be able to put the safety of our schoolchildren ahead of a slightly faster commute time. This plan has great potential to save lives, but only if we have the vision to fully embrace the actions outlined. What I really like about this plan is that it's truly a plan for everyone, all modes. These actions will benefit people who walk, bike, skate, scoot, use transit. And I look forward to offering my time and efforts to make this plan work for all Portlanders. Since I have a little bit of extra time, I would just like to also suggest that I would love to see a way that ordinary people can report dangerous drivers. I think most people who ride a bike or walk in the city have had those instances where a car nearly killed them. And, you know, I have called the police, not in Portland recently, but, you know, in other cities, and just been met with total lack of regard. They don't treat it seriously. Fortunately, I haven't had to try it here lately. But, you know, I would love to see some kind of way that I can whip out a smartphone, pull over, write down the license plate number, so that when the officer eventually does pull over this person for a DUI, or does pull this person over for some other infraction, they can see that, oh, 15 people have reported this person as a violent person on the neighborhood greenways who are endangering people's lives. Maybe it would work. I don't know. But again, I look forward to your support for Vision Zero, and thank you very much for the time.
Okay, thank you all. Mr. Howell, you get the last word here, I guess.
And Mr. Everett Yaros.
Oh, okay. Welcome.
My name is Jim Howell. I'm here to support Vision Zero. And as has been pointed out before, there's one big flaw in it. And that's not what it has in it, but what it doesn't have in it. And that is how to reduce traffic in the city. The city's growing, traffic is growing, and we get more and more frustrated drivers, frustrated drivers, or unsafe drivers. And that has a lot to do with the accidents and crashes we have. So the agency that provides the alternative is Trimate, which is not under your control. But there are things the city council can do, and the mayor can do specifically. I remember back 40 years ago, when Trimate was wavering and having some problems. And the mayor of Portland went to the governor and asked the governor to shake up Trimate. And he did. And Trimate, then, at that point in time, went into a renaissance of really improving their service. They need that type of shakeup today. Their focus has been so much on big capital projects and not adding bus service. And we are sorely in need of far better and more service. So that's what you folks can do, is put the pressure on the governor to put the pressure on Trimate. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Everett Yaros. The first I was aware of Vision Zero was some signs or posters that I saw along North Killingsworth, maybe last spring, which I thought was a strange, well, when I figured out that it had something to do with, something about safety on the streets, I thought it was a rather strange name. Maybe it, you know, I understand it came from Sweden, and they have a lot of good ideas. And maybe Vision Zero lost something in the translation. I don't know. Anyway, there's been comments in support of data-driven being a good measure. Well, I would say, yes, it is a good measure for seeing how badly you failed, or for that matter, succeeded. But I would suggest that even more importantly, or at least as important, would be starting off with common sense and consciousness. And I would suggest that caring and intention in street design would be very important matters. Again, in North Killingsworth, in front of the North Portland Library, there's a bike rack there that has a puddle about an inch, maybe slightly more than an inch deep, between the two bike racks. Of course, it doesn't, it's not there very much in the summer, but this time of year, it's quite noticeable. And it extends not just between the two bike racks, but also, it's about 20 feet long, so it extends into the bike shelter, into the bus shelter there, too. Now, of course, a puddle is really not very important. I'm sure we can all agree on that, unless, of course, you happen to have to walk in it several times a week. Now, when the, the entire stretch of North Killingsworth from shortly east of the North Portland Library, all the way over to MLK, was redoning the sidewalk and the streets this summer. And the sidewalk in front of, well, in front of, in other words, had three bicycle, three bike racks installed there after the construction work was done. bicycle, three bike racks installed there after the construction work was done, and I'm glad to report that only one of those bike racks actually has a puddle there, and, but there is a puddle, it does, the water does puddle more to the interior of that sidewalk. Now, why, I'm sure street sidewalks could be designed so that the water would generally run down onto the curb, it's all new curbs there, as well as new sidewalks, but that's not done. Now, that's what I speak of when I speak of a design intention and caring. So, you know, and I did, I'm sorry, I had a list of, like, the pothole that I, that my bike broke in and I almost lost my life in a year ago. There's, there's more potholes around town now than there were a year ago, various death traps where
Okay, thank you, Mr. Yaros.
Where the utility boxes are in the middle of sidewalks, right by intersections, a lot of dangerous design around Portland.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are there questions for staff, or should we act on the amendments?
Well, just before we do that, I'd like to propose a third one, and that would be to add an emergency clause to this report to the ordinance, because if ever there's an emergency, we know that there are more fatalities every day, we want to get this onto our legislative agenda before the end of the year. And so would that be okay with you, Commissioner?
I believe so.
Okay. Okay, well, just act on the amendments first, and then we'll act on the emergency clause. So we have some amendments removed and seconded. Carl?
Are we voting on them as a package?
Yes, there's two of them.
On the emergency?
Commissioner, if, if you would, vote on each additional, or each amendment separately.
And we need language for the emergency clause.
And that's because of the urgent need for public health and safety.
Thank you. Novik?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Okay, then on the second amendment, the direction to PBOT? I guess that is all one amendment, isn't it?
No, there was, there were, there were two.
So there's in the ordinance findings, that's one, and then the direction to PBOT is the second.
Okay, so call the role on the second one, the direction to PBOT.
Novik?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
And amendments are adopted, and now on the, adding the emergency clause?
Novik?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
And now on accepting the report.
Novik?
I just wanted to say what a privilege it has been to work with all of you on traffic safety issues for the past few years, and I'm grateful for everyone's hard work and commitment and emotional energy, and I'm grateful for everything that I've learned. I'm grateful for what we've been able to accomplish, and grateful that we've committed ourselves to accomplishing much more. So I just wanted to say thank you all very, very much. Aye.
Fritz? Well, thank you, Commissioner Novik, for your leadership of the bureau, and all the improvements that have been made in transportation over the last four years, and particularly for this. And when it comes back every year, I hope we'll consider this a living document that the committee, I'm glad the committee's going to continue to meet, and that each year you'll come back with a checklist of completed, and then the next task as well with priorities. And you'll be happy to know that when I told Mayor-elect Wheeler about the tax on marijuana, how much it might raise, he said, please tell me that some of it might go to Vision Zero. And so he already is aware of that, I am certainly also aware of that, and will, early in the new year, figure out the budget process for you all to come back and advocate for budget allocations from that. And, and in that regard, I want to particularly thank Portland Firefighters Association Local 483, 43, and Assme Local 189, because in the, in the spring, they paid for the poll that gave me the reasons to do the tax and to specify which things should be in it. It was done based on polling.
Commissioner, may I interrupt? I forgot to mention this, they also each contributed $10,000 to the gas tax campaign, which will fund many vitally needed safety projects.
You know, our city workers are very much committed to public safety and that, putting their own money into making sure this pass. I, I do need to mention also that the Police Association offered to give money to actually fund the campaign, but due to the appearance, perhaps that it could have been a conflict of interest, I chose instead to fund it myself. So I'm really happy with that. Couple of, several things, I, that we heard testimony about driver behavior and that it's changed, and it certainly has changed over the first years that I've been here. And sometimes it's changed in better ways, and it's very, just like the bus lines are all quite, they have the quite, the flavor of the different kinds of folks who are on the 44 versus the 12 at, at various times of the day. I think there's also marked changes in behavior in neighborhoods, and I was particularly struck a year or two ago when I was driving down Martin Luther King Boulevard for the first time in, in quite some time, how slowly people went and how lots of people were stopping for pedestrians at the crosswalks, even though they weren't particularly marked. And that just shows that each of us can take responsibility for this. Each of us can slow down when somebody could be crossing it and being aware of those things. A couple of things I wanted to just continue to mention about helmets for Bike Town, that's something that I'm sure if we continue thinking about it, something will be solved with that regard. And another action item that just occurred to me just recently, I love the flashing beacon crosswalks, they're, they're really striking, you know, striking, and you can't possibly miss them. The challenge I find is that there's some similarly marked crosswalks, but they don't have the flashing beacons, and so as people get more used to seeing the flashing beacons, it could be that those crosswalks become even more dangerous. So we should think about, even though it's expensive, going back to do the flashing beacons. I definitely support the red light cameras and also the speed cameras. I also have not been in the judge's court, but I did get on the speed camera one time, and I have amended my ways. That, I, I could go into why it was not really my fault, but I won't. Because, you know, it really is all of our fault. We do have to be looking out for, is this a highway on ramp, or is it actually a neighborhood street? I wanted to address a few of the quest, of the issues that Bike Loud Portland sent in a very informative letter, and I'm happy to say that I agreed with everything on the front page, but then they started talking about supporting the focus on interactions or infractions that are most likely to result in serious injury and death, and they said that because people, infractions by people walking or cycling rarely result in injury or death, the draft Vision Zero plan should contain language that de-emphasizes infractions by vulnerable traffic that do not pose risk to others. The thing is, if I'm in a cross, if I'm a pedestrian, and I'm walking, jaywalking, not crossing in the middle of a, where I should be crossing, not waiting for the light, I'm just as culpable as the person who might hit me. I, before I got onto the council, I was yelled at by a police officer on a, on a motorcycle for jaywalking downtown, and he actually stopped me, had a nice conversation, and I said, well, why? You know, there's nothing coming. And he said, well, there's children who might be watching you, or there might be blind people who would sense that you were moving, it might be safe for you, but it's not safe for them. Having had that explanation, I almost never jaywalk anymore. I say almost, because, anyway, I wasn't going to that one either. But again, it's just embracing the fact that we're all responsible. Again, Bike Loud PDX said that people walking or biking should not be blamed because they were wearing supposedly inappropriate or dark clothing. No, actually, if you're wearing, if, it's your, it's my responsibility as a pedestrian to wear something bright and/or to carry a flashlight in my pocket, so that I don't have to remember it, it's there, and I can turn it on when I get off the bus. And so it's all of us, there's nobody who's immune to this, it's, it's a matter of life and death, literally. I know that this particular hearing is going to continue to be kind of like the Holocaust survivors, Holocaust victims reading, in that it's immensely painful to be thinking about traffic crashes and deaths, and yet it's absolutely essential that we continue to do so. So thank you for your work. Aye.
Fish?
Well, first, I want to thank Commissioner Novik for the leadership that he's brought to PBOT these last three and a half, four years. And I was just making a list of the things that he has led that have been, I think, very noteworthy. The commitment he made to advance street paving and figuring out a way to pay for that, hiring Leah Treet, Vision Zero, Bike Share, the gas tax, and those are, those are just a handful of the things that Steve has done as the leader of the, of this bureau. The next mayor is going to reassign this bureau, and we, and he's been keeping all of his cards very close to his vest. The commitment that I will make, Steve, is that as a member of this council, I will continue to support the good work that you and Leah launched on Vision Zero, and I congratulate you for having prioritized this important work during your tenure. I want to thank Leah and the team for the presentation, all the members of the public who took time to be with us today and to testify. And I'll just say that the, the thing that I really like about this, this document is that it's holistic, and it looks comprehensively at how to tackle this problem. And I appreciate that it isn't any one of these things, it's all of them. It's getting people to slow down and maybe changing the speed, it's, it's being more focused and strategic about how we do enforcement, it's education and outreach, it's the capital improvements to, to make it safer for everyone, pedestrians, bikes, skateboarders, cars, people in public transportation. So I really appreciate that, and it's, it's a good read. And, and, and yes, it is words on paper, and it's incumbent on this council to find the resources to fund it. We did get a, a budget preview a couple of months ago, and, you know, we do have a structural budget problem, and it could get worse if there's a recession, but that cannot be an excuse not to continue to make progress towards this. And what I like about this is it allows Director Treet each year to come to council and say, this is what I need to, to move the ball a little further, and the, the community has clearly embraced this Vision Zero. And, and I just appreciate the good work and the thoughtfulness, and I pledge to be a strong supporter of this as you implement it. Thank you, Steve.
Aye.
Saltzman?
Well, thank you, Commissioner Novik, for your leadership on this Vision Zero effort, and I want to thank Leah Treet as well, and, there she is, and the steering committee, and the staff who've done a lot of good work on this. But I think it's really, you know, I, I lean towards the hard-nosed enforcement side of things, because I'm convinced that's the only thing that gets people's attention. I would remember if I'd been in Judge Todd's court, for instance.
We're down to one suspect. We're down, we're down to one. By process of elimination, we have now, this is an Agatha Christie novel, we're now down to one. And I'm not going to mention his name, out of respect.
I just, I vividly recall any interaction I've had with the police over moving violations over the years, or anytime I've received a ticket. And I think we've become all too complacent to, as Director Treet saw on her ride-along, you know, we are routinely desensitized to the fact that people can have their licenses suspended 34 times, and it's, oh, well, I mean, that's, that's the way it is. You know, we, we support people's right to drive, people gotta, you know, they gotta get to work, they gotta do all this X, Y, and Z, and we've become entirely too complacent about it, and we can't afford to do that, particularly, you know, I think one of the cold, hard facts we, we don't like to admit, but everybody is always complaining about traffic in Portland, people are driving more. Gas is cheap, people who find themselves living further on the outskirts of the city have to get to work, to jobs in the city. So there's a lot more people on the roads, and we have to make sure that we recognize all the competing interests. I like the Bicycle Transportation Alliance's new name and new theme, All Users of the Roads, but I do think we need strong enforcement, and that means things like more overtime controls by police, you know, maybe some of the crazy ideas I've even suggested, and I will suggest at our legislative session next week. But it takes all efforts, but that's my own predilection, is hardcore enforcement. Thank you all. Aye, and the report's accepted, and we are adjourned until Wednesday, December 7th, at 9:30.[1752.32]